To this very day. And I can't tell you how proud, blessed, and touched I am to be speaking to you today in the John Cherny Lecture Hall. John Cherny was a classmate and very close friend of mine. John Cherny was someone who was gay when it was not easy to be gay, who died far too early of a plague that befell the gay community HIV and AIDS. And John and his spirit, because he loved all people, impacts me as I do, the work I do today with the ADL. Because you need that spirit of having love for your fellow man, particularly when we're going through some very troubling times. So what I'm going to speak to you about tonight is the rise of antisemitism here in our country, here in our city, and some suggestions about maybe what some of us can do about it. First, a note about what is ADL? What is the Anti-Defamation League? The Anti-Defamation League was founded over 100 years ago in 1913 in a time of rising hatred in this country, of rising antisemitism, a time when Jewish people could not buy homes in certain neighborhoods, could not go to certain schools, could not partake in certain professions. And in the midst of this, there was a businessman, a Jewish businessman in Atlanta, who was running a factory, and a Christian girl was killed in that factory. And he was accused of the crime of murder, wrongfully convicted. As he awaited his death sentence to be overturned by the governor, he was dragged from a jail cell and he was lynched. He was lynched because he was Jewish. And this is what the environment, the ADL, was born. And from the very start, the ADL's mission is integrated: to stop the defamation of the Jewish people, to stop the harm to the Jewish people, and to secure justice and fair treatment for all. Because make no mistake, and it was recognized over 100 years ago by the founders, the Jewish community would never be safe unless other communities are safe. And other communities will not be safe unless the Jewish community is safe. All too often prejudice against a Jewish community is the beginning of the unraveling of society and democracies. Now, one of the things ADL does, and has done for over 40 years, is conduct an audit of antisemitic incidents. And by incidents, what I mean are harassment, vandalism, and assault. 2021, the last year we did the full study, was a record-setting year. 2,717 antisemitic incidents around this country, 34% increase year-to-year from 2020, on average of seven a day. And in the over 40 years we've done this audit, four of the worst years were within the last five years. Here in this city, here in this city, we experienced the same. 28% increase, 182 incidents. And amongst the things I'm saddest to report is we had 14 assaults in 2021 in this city of people solely because they were Jewish. One of those occurred at a sushi restaurant in La Cienega, where four young people were beaten up simply because they were Jewish. By coincidence, I happened to dine there last evening. My own little show of strength. What's happening also within schools, K through 12 schools throughout the country in 2021, is troubling. These are school districts all throughout the country where there were 331 incidents of antisemitism. Now, some of those, and I'm going to be very precise to read to you, include things like harassment. So here's what harassment looks at certain schools in this country. One student telling another, "I wish Hitler was alive to kill you and the rest of the Jews." A teacher stating to her class, "Maybe the Jews deserve to die," while teaching a class on the Holocaust, and bullying that makes a joke of the Holocaust and antisemitism. Now, one of the obvious questions is, why now? Why now? Why are we seeing so much antisemitism throughout our country? And I'm going to offer three basic suggestions. But these are not the only ones. So it's really the right conditions, the right propellants, and the right ignition. The conditions: society is in turmoil right now. Economically, politically, we've been through COVID. Educationally, I don't need to tell you this. And when there are times of turmoil, times of anxiety, historically, the world's oldest hatred antisemitism, anti-Jewish hatred, comes to the fore. That's the conditions. Then's the propellant. What is it that can make this so dangerous? And it's social media. It's social media, everyone. Students, parents, board members. And the reason why social media is so dangerous is because whatever happens there spreads virally, and everyone knows this. The good things, but so much bad things. And then there's the spark. And the spark is frankly celebrities, public personalities, politicians, who have millions of followers, then utter antisemitic comments. And that's what we've seen. That's what we've seen here in this community, in Los Angeles, here in Beverly Hills. We've seen what happens when remarks by the rapper formerly known as Kanye West, things like DEFCON 3 on the Jews, things like just recently, "I like Hitler. There are some good things about Hitler." When those things happen with millions of followers, he has twice as many followers on social media than there are Jews on the planet. And it not only empowers and gets spread to the people who follow him, but it also gives power to those who want to do harm, bad people, extremists. ADL, we have a Center on Extremism. We have 40, 50 people. All they do is monitor the dark web, unfortunately to see the worst of the worst, as these people are planning to do these things. And they have a new hero. Everyone from both, all sides of the aisle, white extremists, black Hebrew Israelites. This is the new hero. And so we've seen this in this community, this group, that then hears about Kanye West, hangs banners over the 405. The same group distributes flyers in our neighborhoods. This is the same group that drove buses through this community in May. So there are people who want to spread propaganda, bad things. We know who they are. Chief Stainbrook and the entire Beverly Hills Police Department, they know who they are too. We work together to share this information. But what this is trying to do is to make us scared, to make us quiet. And that's the last thing we can do right now. So I want to share with all of you some things that we're doing at ADL and some things that you all can do as well. We believe and we know that while we're putting out these various fires, the key is education. The key is to make sure that we're speaking to each other. And I was listening to your mission and your values. And so we have curriculum that supports that. In schools, we have our No Place for Hate program, which is a peer-led program. It applies not only, and most of what I'm talking about, these kind of educational efforts aren't limited to the Jewish community. They're to all communities. But when it does come to the Jewish community, part of it's education. We have a program called Bina, which is an online curriculum for high school juniors and seniors, where you learn about the American Jewish experience. 20% of the Jewish community is not white. Jews of color make up 20% of the Jewish community. In this city, the LA Federation just did a study, 20% of the community is in financial stress. We have these educational programs to help give understanding, help make sure that people understand that the Holocaust and the lessons from that are learned. And that's our Echoes and Reflections program that we do with the Holocaust Museum and with the Shoah Foundation. But there's also part of it in all of you. So let me, let me share with you what all of you can do. So the first is, whenever you see any act of antisemitism or any other form of hatred, speak up. Use your voice online with your friends. It's not easy. We know that. It's not easy for any of us, but speak up. We urge that all of you do this. ADL is part of a national campaign right now, Shine a Light on Antisemitism, in collaboration with a number of other Jewish organizations. We're encouraging people during Hanukkah, social media, speak up. Shine a light on antisemitism. For those who own or run or are part of businesses, bring us in to do somewhat a version of this as an antisemitism 101. Learn about what the problem is. So that's the first, speak up. Share facts. We've already provided, and it will be distributed and made available to everyone, resources. Resources, if you go on the ADL website, you'll see something like, something called Antisemitism Uncovered, which is six-minute videos that talk about some of the traditional antisemitic tropes that people use and to give understanding. For those of you who have kids in college, going to go to college one day, campus presents its own problems and challenges right now. And we at ADL have something called Think, Plan, Act. All available on our website. All resources we'll be providing. But it's also incumbent, as so many people want to do something right now, is also to educate yourself. Because that's part of what you can do to speak up. And then the last thing really is, is to support each other. Courage encourages courage. It's a line I recently heard, I just think is great. Courage encourages courage. And when it comes to things like this, where it doesn't just feel like antisemitism is rising, it is. It doesn't, doesn't just feel like it's getting normalized. It is if we allow it to be normalized. And so the opportunity to speak to all of you this evening, to speak to all of you this evening, particularly the students. We all have our own role right now. And ADL, we're very proud to be part of that. So I'm very honored to be here this evening. And I thank you for the time and really the ongoing partnership throughout the city with the school district, with the police department, with City Hall. We thank you for the partnership and we'll continue to be here because the need is great. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff. Please don't go. I'm going to ask if we can go around for comments, but I really appreciate you being here. It's, you know, you've said a lot of really wonderful things. And I also encourage our admin as well to look into some of these programs. I know you mentioned to me previously that you're working with Manhattan Unified and Harvey Wasik as well, and some other school districts. So I think it's great for us to find out what some of those programs are.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Thank you. Alex, I'll start with you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Abrams, for coming to speak tonight. And I just had a few comments. The first is, I think, you know, every year we hear the phrase, "Never again," especially around Holocaust remembrance. But, you know, here we are in our own, you know, heavily populated Jewish community. And the hatred and the discrimination is happening again. And it's not okay. And I also wanted to share that over the weekend I had the opportunity to talk to Mayor Lily Bossi. And she had just came back, come back from the mayoral conference in Greece, which if you don't know what that is, mayors from around the world came together for a conference that was so that they could bounce ideas off each other on how to combat rising antisemitism around the world. And one of the things she said she most appreciated was that not only were there mayors from the countries that were at the epicenter of World War II and the Holocaust, and mayors here in America, but also mayors from places around the world that have very limited knowledge of the Holocaust and they don't really understand it. And to me, that just goes to show that antisemitism is really still a place of, you know, that lacks education. And starting from the bottom up, I think, is going to help us so much. So thank you so much for speaking in.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here, Jeff. They turned it the other way on me now.
She was a tough teacher. I'm not saying a word.
She asked me if that's what you said.
It was.
I just want to tell you how proud I am of you and how far you've come. And I can't believe that you're standing in front of the group this night speaking in such passionate and such important work that you're doing. I, I, I know your mom and dad, who I knew well, would be so proud to know that this was what you were doing. And I have to share with you, as you probably don't know, that I grew up in Minneapolis, and I've shared that many times. But I grew up, we were the only Jewish family in the area where my parents lived. And I can remember how many times I was called a bad name. And sometimes if I, you argue about something, "Don't be Jewing me down." And I would tell them, "I'm Jewish." And they would, all my, they took quite, they didn't realize that that was an offensive thing to say. And I have to tell you, I'm, it was the passion you spoke with, the message you gave, I'm sure it's going to go far and wide in our school district, in the city, and in the LA area. And I'm, the fact that you were up there standing so important in what you're doing, I can't begin to tell you. And so I hope that we see you again. I hope that they bring you back for a student and when we do Holocaust Day, as you know. And you can spread your message then. And I, I think that what you said to the kids about what they can do, what the students can do, and how they can keep up, I hope they took the message and carry it forward.
Thank you so very much.
Jeff, thank you so much for being here tonight, the work that you do for ADL, but also the work you do across the Jewish community, which I know, I was trying to place you at the very beginning. I knew I knew you, and then I spoke to Ms. Marcus. So thank you for that. I, I have a, I have a question. I'm going to put you on the spot. Does antisemitism have a branding problem? So, you know, when, when a lot of people hear antisemitism, a lot of them don't know what it means, right? Semites are from, you know, regions of the world. Jews are all over the world. Like what, what, how, how do we, how are we supposed to think about how we describe antisemitism? Because in the end of the day, we're talking about the hatred of Jews in some form, right? When we talk about antisemitism. So talk to me about that, Jeff.
So you're, you're dead on. I had this conversation this very day. Antisemitism is a word that's really a construct that came rather recently, in the 1800s. And it was always used as a pejorative. It wasn't an academic term. It was meant to be something nasty to say about Jewish people. Some, and so because of the word and because of linguistically, sometimes it can detract from what exactly it is. Now, there are some people, including Ambassador Lipstadt, who's the US State Department's envoy against antisemitism, who would advocate the term Jew hatred. Today, I heard, I think, a term that I like even more, which is anti-Jewish hatred. Because that's really what it is. It's anti-Jewish hatred. And that way, you avoid some of the semantics. But part of it is, I think, that branding problem. But it's only a branding problem if you allow it to be. Because when it's used, if people are of goodwill and good faith about the issue, everyone knows exactly what you're saying when you say antisemitism.
Yeah.
So, but it's, it's, I appreciate the question very much.
Yeah, thank you so much for, again, for the work that you're doing. And ADL is truly a wonderful organization. What you said about how ADL really comes to the support of not only the Jewish people, but all communities. It's, it's really true. I've, I've seen it in some of the work that I've done with ADL when I was a student in college. So just, but thank you. And really, just a wonderful organization to continue to support. And I agree, I would love to see our school district work more closely with your organization.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Abrams, so much for being part of the ADL. I think it is so, such important work that not only are you educating, is the ADL educating everyone about the scourge of antisemitism, but also, in fact, you're monitoring some of the, you know, some of its activity and also ostensibly warning us about potential perilous events. And of course, I know that the larger mission and message is that there are many communities throughout history that have also been subject to genocide. You know, the Holocaust, of course, is one. And it is a reminder that, that we need to continue to address and not forget when whole groups of people are targeted through hatred because of a perceived set of bad traits. And it is just so unjust. And I'm truly grateful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your words tonight. Were you class of '85 or?
I was.
Awesome. '86. I knew John through KBEV.
Ah, yeah, good.
Anyway, thank you for tonight, and I echo my colleague's sentiments.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I agree. I like the connection that Dr. Stern made between the hate, the Jew hatred, and with, and how that correlates to many other groups that are also subject to many of the same, similar types of tropes. And I think it's really important for us to speak out against hatred in all forms. And it starts, it starts, you know, you can start anywhere you're comfortable. But I think what you were talking about in terms of courage encourages courage, I think is a great thing to keep in your mind because I do think it builds. And, and to tie it back to what we spoke about last week, one of the comments that we had for Transgender Day of Remembrance was that hatred thrives when good people are uninformed. And I think that couldn't be more true in this case and against all groups. And so I really appreciate you being here tonight. And I'd love that you are part of our community and have such a history here. So thank you for, for making that connection for everybody.
Thank you so much.
And I think it's already been said, but I had the pleasure of listening to you speak as a Rotarian as well, as Mrs. Wells and Ms. Darkins. You know, that's, that's a tough group. And you could hear a pin drop in there when you were speaking. And so we had the benefit of listening to you for our keynote speaker. And I only wish that we had that kind of time because you've just left, left such a lasting impression on us. Thank you for coming. This was facts with a real practical, you know, pragmatic approach. I appreciate that. Also the program, so we look forward to working with you in the future.
Wonderful. I'll even give you my business card.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, everybody, very much.
Thank you again. I really appreciate it. Okay, next on our agenda is our teacher-student spotlight. And tonight, we have the pleasure of recognizing our BHUSD Secondary Science and Engineering Fair winners. And I'm going to call up Dr. Skon to introduce everybody. And when we finish, if you guys would stick around so we can get a photograph with all of you, and we can also have board comments. So don't run away too quickly.
Good evening, President Wells and Board of Education. My name is Maggie Mayberry. I am the coordinator of elementary education. And I'm part of an amazing ed services team that worked side by side with the Ed Foundation in having our secondary science fair. We have some amazing inventors in this room, explorers who had an idea, a problem, that they then solved. And they showed that through various steps, and not only in a presentation, but they got grilled by the judges. I was walking around, and you guys were very, very impressive in the questions that were being asked of you. But I am so excited to introduce Dr. Skon, to introduce our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade winners, and then moving on to our high school winners as well. But we can't wait to see what you guys bring to the county level as our students are moving on to the county level and seeing where you build, you little sixth graders. Can't wait to see what you bring us when you're all the way up in the 12th grade because we saw some amazing projects. Dr. Skon!
So I had the pleasure of being a judge. Unfortunately, they didn't let me judge my kiddos, which is probably a good thing because I would have awarded all of my middle schoolers. We had so many, I just have to brag, on BBMS, so many middle schoolers submit projects this year. It was, I mean, I think they took up most of the cafeteria and probably next year we will need a larger space. So the winners that are here, you guys like really were the cream of the crop because you had a lot of competitions. I'm very proud of you that I get to announce you. So when I call your name, come on up. We're going to, I'm going to start with sixth grade. So for our first place winners, we had Taekeun, Stephanie, and Ellie. I'm going to call up the rest of the sixth graders. So for our second place, we had Omer. And third place is Nathan. All right, so these are our sixth grade winners, but you guys have to stay up, okay? Now, for seventh grade, and I have to say, the ladies killed it in seventh grade. So shout out, yay, women and STEM. So first place was Sharzad and Evelyn. Come on up. Congratulations, ladies. And then second place, Anya and Grace. And third place was Ava. And then our amazing eighth graders. And I sure hope that next year I get to judge one of your projects as ninth graders at the high school. So I expect to see you submitting projects next year. All right, first place goes to Anthony. And then second place is Naomi, Sophie, Leah, and Lali. Congratulations. And then third place is Isadora and Jessica. Congratulations to all my kiddos. I'm so very proud of you. Yay. Huge round of applause for BBMS. And then I don't know, did you guys want to go now or high school now?
Why don't we add the high school?
Okay, perfect.
All of our science fair.
Because BBMS like totally rocked it. Okay, this is Ms. Decaturl, one of the co-principals at the high school.
Thank you. So I'm going to brag too because we had more entries this year than we have had previously. So we're growing our program. We're growing our participation in the science fair. There's a lot of enthusiasm around it. We just have so many things that our kids are involved in that they are spread very thin. So we were thrilled to have more participation this year and some really exciting projects. So we have some of our students here this evening. I will introduce our third place winners first. We have Karina Kruger and Sarah Zhang. Where should we go? I want you to be closer.
Yeah.
You're too far.
Bring him on this side of you.
Come down here. We'll go this way.
Yeah.
And I love your sweatshirts.
Oh, yeah, we're advertising the merch?
It's almost like you planned it. Okay, no hiding. And our second place winners were Talia Goshani, Gunwoo Park. Come on up. Brandon Seth. And Nick Savanian.
Stand next to Dr. Brady.
First place, Colby Galardian. Are you allowed to come down here? Okay. Apam Hamran. Hamran. Jasmine Vadizadeh. Congratulations to all of you, and thank you for participating. And we're even going to be using some of their apps that they invented here at the school, so.
Excellent.
Real-world applications. One of the things I was also impressed by, I was a judge. They would not let me judge our students because obviously biased. But it was a rigorous rubric. And all of the students had a very impressive scientific experimental process. So the process is what I thought was really one of the most intriguing aspects of the science fair. And you guys just knocked it out of the park. So congratulations.
All right, don't go yuck because I'd like to congratulate you all and have the board go around. So I'll start with Alex.
Congratulations to every single one of you. And I hope all of you continue your involvement with the science fair as you continue your journey in BHUSD. And for the middle schoolers especially, I know that the science Olympiad and robotics teams at the high school will definitely be welcoming you, welcoming you guys with open arms. So consider joining those too.
Mrs. Marcus?
I want to congratulate all of you. I had the chance to be a little bit of the science fair. I think I met some of you when you were presenting your projects. I was one of the judges. And I love the fact that there is beginning to be a real, they're getting to be more in-depth and more involved. They're starting to really show what a science fair project is. I noticed that they really had some great thoughts in them. fair project is. I noticed that they really had some great thoughts in them, and I really want to congratulate all of you, and I hope that maybe I'll see some of you next year at the next year's presentation. So keep up the good work, and I look forward to seeing you again.
I'm so, so proud of everyone up here. This is so awesome that you guys engaged, that you won. It's even cooler. I remember getting placed somewhere in my science fair in seventh grade. I, I never went into engineering or science or anything, but I remember that some of the, you know, some of the concepts of engineering and science that I practically learned in that science fair years later when I was running a technology startup with engineering and whatnot, like, those things came right back. And I just like, I love what you guys all must be learning and how that's gonna pay dividends years into the future. So congratulations, super exciting, and you guys should be very proud.
I was really pleased to be one of the judges at BVMS, and I'll just share a little bit that Sharzad and Evelyn, I really enjoyed, they had actually a testable problem, a good hypothesis, and they were looking at whether people can tell the difference between a vegan-based recipe for a muffin versus one that uses... I knew I got the names wrong. Anyway, that, if you could tell the difference between the vegan source versus milk, and I also thought that it was great because it had real-world implications, which is that there is a tremendous toll on the environment from the meat production industry, and I just thought it was really well done and carried out, and I enjoyed it. Thank you.
I'm so impressed to see so many people up here. I, I would charge you next year, any of you, to create an app that helps alter caca's like myself remember to show up and judge the science fair this year, because I had it on the wrong day in my calendar, and even though I have a calendar and a reminders app, maybe you could break that barrier between like somebody over fifty and doesn't know how to put something in his phone right, and then get us to be able to show up when they're supposed to. I've actually judged the science fair for the last ten years. I love it. I am so crushed. Dustin knows. I was so upset that I missed it. I reached out to him immediately. I felt horrible because I just had one day wrong on my calendar. So I am so impressed with everybody. Congratulations.
I just want to say congratulations to all of you. I am so impressed with all of you. I'm so excited about all of you and for our, our future, because you're asking questions and finding problems that need to be solved, and that's what you demonstrated, all of you, and you're going to solve our world's problems and from a scientific standpoint. So keep asking those questions, keep identifying the problems, and I have all the faith in the world that you are going to be our future. So congratulations and keep it up.
Also, congratulations. It's great to see you again. What you're doing, and I had talked about this in my superintendent's report a few weeks ago, is something that, that is the most difficult thing for teachers to do, and that's to teach students to critically think. Everything you did about your project is using critical thinking. So I want to congratulate you for doing this and really showing us that you're able to do this. The topics were impressive. The knowledge that you have, the questions you had to ask and answer for all of us that were there was really very impressive. So I want to thank you for doing something that, you've demonstrated something that's the most difficult thing for teachers to do, and that's critically think. So thank you, congratulations.
Congratulations again to all of you, and thank you for being here tonight so we could recognize you. Thank you. Yes, did you get a picture, or do you want to? I think if you got it, then, okay, great. Thank you all.
Just Photoshop it, Rebecca, just.
Terrific. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the consent calendar. May I have a motion for approval for consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar minus item B1.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero with a preferential vote from Alex Bodden. Sorry, I missed a teacher spotlight. Is Ms. Decatral coming back up? Okay. I'd like to invite Ms. Decatral up for the continuation of our spotlight. Sorry about that.
That's okay. We have to let them all.
Yes.
Make their way, anyway. So, I am here again to introduce one of our best and our brightest, our newest best and brightest, and I have the pleasure to introduce BHHS Instrumental Music Director, Justin Klotzel. Mr. Klotzel comes to BHUSD in his sixth year of teaching after directing instrumental music programs at Burbank High School, and that was three years there, and Simi Valley High School, two years there. Justin holds a Bachelor of Arts in Music Education from UCLA, and a Master's of Music in Music Education from Boston University. Not too shabby. No. His passion for education is centered around growing a musical community that empowers independent growth and develops social, emotional, and life skills in tandem with musical mastery. And I know this to be true because we've already seen really some amazing instructional things, amazing classroom rapport, and teaming within the student group. Justin is most excited about the opportunity to collaborate with his colleagues on the upcoming production of Mean Girls in the spring. Everybody go see that. And we, he did a live-to-silent film concert in October. So we had a silent film playing, the students were playing the music to the movie that everyone was watching. It was an amazing sort of interactive experience. And we have a winter concert tomorrow night, Holiday Lights, and I will let Mr. Klotzel come up and tell you a little bit more about these things. And the Gate Program.
Terrific.
Right, so I'll let you take that part.
Hi, good evening, Board of Education, and thank you, Kim, for that introduction. It's really a fantastic opportunity to be here tonight and to be selected for the teacher spotlight, and to share a little bit about what I've been doing with the students here at the high school and in the rest of the community here at BHUSD in the last couple of months. The opportunity that I had to teach this Gate Program, which I think was the impetus for me being here tonight, was, was fantastic. I was looking for a, a way to start to bridge the gap between the elementary school and then working with Ms. Valens in the middle school in the, in the instrumental music program, where learning those skills and the foundational, like, music literacy, and then playing an instrument builds on itself sequentially, year, year after year, and trying to find a way to merge the district's, the district's passion for pathways, which I, which is amazing, with the instrumental music program, and finding ways to give the students in the elementary school a way to interact with the high schoolers here on campus while learning it, an instrument, and seeing what is possible for them throughout the next five, six years, you know, as they continue through this performing arts pathway, and getting the opportunity to work with these young students that I, that I had teaching alto and oboe and some of the not-so-easy instruments to start on, was, was fantastic. My work is mostly with the high school, and so getting to work with the young students in the elementary school was, was a really awesome experience and well, well, well-appreciated, and I, and I think well-received. And so I look forward to working with the rest of our instrumental music and, and music colleagues here in the district to find ways to, to merge what we do together and, and build a stronger community of, of music and performance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alex?
Thank you so much, Mr. Klotzel, for your enrichment of the music program, you know, so quickly, and also, I'm particularly grateful for your commitment to the pathways, because I think it's important that we're having students, you know, stay with the pathway of the music industry all the way through. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Klotzel. I spoke to, I think, during the program that I shared, introduced myself. I'd like to share with you that I have been the biggest proponent, and I think Dr. Braggy will tell you, that I have been screaming and screaming about bringing instrumental music back to the elementary school, because that's where we're going to get the numbers to grow, and we need that, and, and beside which, playing an instrument does something for kids that you can't believe. And I, as, as a student who learned to play a flute when I was in seventh grade, never, forgot how important it was to me in, to be in the music program, and how it enriched my life in the high school. So I, I think if we can find people like you who can teach it to the kids in the fourth and fifth grade, we will bring that program back, and we will get it going again. So I, I'm hopeful of that. I just want to share with you one little incident. We have one thing in common. My daughter attended the School of Fine Arts in Boston, in the School of Music, so.
Fantastic. I, I enjoyed my, enjoyed my time there, for sure. Thank you. I definitely agree with, with your statements.
I will agree with the comments that my colleagues have already made. Just thank you for the contributions that you're making. Thank you for your passion. I know that the kids are, are already feeling it, and especially with the Gate Program too, which is a really important program.
I forgot one thing. I'm going to be seeing him tomorrow night. I will be there.
Thank you.
Mr. Klotzel, your name is coming up in our household. Will you believe?
No, I don't, and I'm frankly a little terrified.
A tall, a six-foot-tall guy named Morgan, I think, came to you today, and he said, "I have to talk to Mr. Klotzel. I want to be in the jazz band. I want exposure." And I, I said, "You know, Morgan, that's the first time since being your mom that you've actually come to me and said you're gonna do something proactive to like rearrange a program." And I said, "That's really interesting." So be, be warned that he is coming for you for the jazz band.
I, I found, he found me already.
Oh, you did?
Excited. I am so excited.
He's really good. But I want to ask you, is that, and we couldn't figure out if it was actual class, or is it something that he just shows up for after school?
Yeah, it's just, it's after school. I think there's an R factor for it, but I'm not sure exactly, and so we meet after school once a week. Yeah, for jazz band.
Thank you.
Mandy, you want to just make an appointment with Mr. Klotzel? Thank you. Looking forward to the performance tomorrow, and welcome. I, it's, it's been a heck of a ride for performing arts at this school because of the misplacement, and, and anybody who steps into that role and, and keeps the programs thriving and moving along, my hat's off to. It's my background as well, so I really appreciate all that you guys do.
Thank you.
Well, I just want to say I'm thrilled that you're here, and I've seen you working with the kids and at the different performances so far, last at the Thanksgiving luncheon for the teachers, and I'm really looking forward to tomorrow evening, so thank you very much. You're off to such a wonderful start. I'm really happy you're here.
Thank you.
And Mr. Klotzel, you, it's really big shoes to fill, but what you've done so far in such a short time is nothing short of phenomenal. Thank you for wanting to be a part of our community. I know that when we were doing interviews, I, I don't usually get involved, but it's a, a high-profile position. I reached out to your superintendent, Dr. Peplinsky, and I think the only reason, he said, "Grab him as soon as you can," because he wanted to keep you, but he was retiring, so, and, and really, you've lived up to all of the recommendations, all the feedback, and wanting to partner with us to make program improvements and to grow the enrollment. You know, we have to do this together, and you have really stepped into that, and so we're just so fortunate, so thank you.
Thank you. I'm very excited to be here.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is our superintendent report.
We have one consent item we need to finish that was pulled.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we approved it.
We approved a consent, but not the pulled item.
I pulled, but B1.
B1.
B1?
So I'll make a motion to approve item B1 from the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Well, I pulled this because at the very top of the certificated personnel report, I saw a familiar name, former principal of Hawthorne, former assistant principal at the high school, former student board member, Michelle, formerly Halimi, now Dar, who is my sister. And though I love her and support her, I don't think it's appropriate for me to vote for her, so I'm gonna abstain from this vote.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four-zero with a preferential vote from Alex Bodden with Mr. Halimi abstaining.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, back to reports.
Great.
Dr. Braggy?
Thank you, and Ms. Bodden, if you will just help me out there. Thank you. Just a quick report for you this evening. The, the remaining two weeks that we have before our break is really jam-packed, as you heard tonight, with concerts and performances and activities, so I wanted to share those with you, give you a quick update on some of our musical activities. We have a lot going on in the next two weeks, and so literally something every night for our families and for our students. Just earlier, we heard Mr. Abrams speak, and we commented on the discussion that he had with our Beverly Hills Rotary, and so I wanted to place that in here and, and let you know just again how our partnership with Rotary continues to grow, and they have been awarding our school district with some recognition to show that, that partnership that we have. It's something that's really strengthened over the last couple of years, the benefit of having the partnerships in our city, really bring back programs and resources for all of our students and our staff in our school district. I had the opportunity this last week and week, into the weekend, a California School Board Association, the CSBA, a conference, and this is an opportunity once a year for the Superintendent Cabinet, Board members from all over the state of California to meet and to attend sessions, everything from finance to construction to operations to curriculum and programming, and it's, it's a rare opportunity to have this experience, and I'm really proud to say that our entire cabinet and every single board member, I know Mr. Halimi could not make this one, but our new board member did make it, and it's, just, just one of those opportunities doesn't happen very often. And so we're proud to move forward with the programming and the things that we've learned. We'll be sharing those with you in some upcoming reports, but it was a really beneficial and meaningful opportunity for all of us up here. This weekend, on Sunday morning, we had an opportunity to, again, partner with the city and Mr. Corinne Setien for a tree planting ceremony in honor of Vahag Setien, who was killed by a drunk driver, and so there have been some tree plantings in the past. We attended one last year in Roxbury Park, and then this was in Coldwater Canyon Park, I believe. And so just an opportunity from the police department to the fire department, our school district, the entire Beverly Hills City Council, supporting a family and just generations to come, and in honor of Vahag Setien. Later on Sunday night, we attended, Horace Mann had a Husky Winter Prom, which was pretty spectacular. I hope that their junior prom is just as nice. It was a pretty spectacular event from lights to, you know, a smoke machine that set off fire alarms, but it, it was a great evening, and it was a fundraiser for the PTA at Horace Mann for their shade structures, and so there were over 200 people that attended this event, and it was a really great time for our students to, to dance and to be among friends and start the winter holiday season. And as you heard tonight from Ms. Decatral, who is one of our co-principals, we have another co-principal, and that's Mr. Drew Stewart, and they have stepped in this year as we have our nationwide search to fill the principal position at Beverly Hills High School, and so we have placed information out to, to find that perfect person out there for, for our school, for our high school, and so that information has been placed in many professional publications, and so we are starting to get applicants already. We beat the rush. This is the best time to be looking for an administrator, and so that search is underway, and so we'll provide... is underway. And so we'll provide some more information for you. It's a very comprehensive interview process that we'll share with you so that you get a better understanding of how this person is selected to be the next leader at Beverly Hills High School. The discussion with Fentanyl is still an ongoing and very problematic issue in our community, as well as communities across the country. And so we are continuing to partner with our Laco affiliates so that we can continue to provide information and education to our parents and our students. We are very fortunate to be a school district that has Narcan to assist immediately if there is any type of overdose. We are fortunate to have partnerships with Mickey Fine Pharmacy that was able to get this for us, as school districts are still having a problem filling any type of prescription to have this on hand. And as we continue into 2023, this is going to be a continued focus of ours, because it's all about decision-making, and it's all about education. And we want to be able to provide that information to our parents, our community, but also our students in our classrooms. Next week, we do have our organizational meeting coming up. So I want to share with you our invitation here. We'll be sending something out. We've been so blessed to have Mr. Halimi on our board for the last year. And we'll save our comments in thanking him for all the work that he has done in our last year. But this is an opportunity, then, to say thank you, but also welcome to Mrs. Manicherry, who will be with us. And so we welcome you to join us for this celebration. And that is my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Bregy. Alex, do you have comments? Just thank you so much for your report.
I think I attended almost all of the events that you mentioned, so I'm not going to say anything. And I want to thank you for your report. I would like to make one comment. I think I saw it at the bottom. I'm not sure. The town hall meeting is going to be available on Zoom for people to watch?
Yes. And we'll send something out.
Okay, I haven't seen anything on it yet, so I hope it gets out there for people to know that they can watch something that's very important. And I have to share that the prom at Horace Mann was delightful. I mean, it was, to see these little kids all dressed up in their little gowns and everything. And the food was delicious, and it was really a lovely evening, and I enjoyed it. And I'm looking forward to, well, there's all the holiday concerts coming up in the next couple of weeks. And that's about it for now.
Thank you for your report. I'm bummed that I didn't get to attend those events. It's not easy with four young kids. And also thank you for your kind words. I will miss being on this board. I will save those comments for next week. Thanks.
Thank you for your report, Dr. Bregy. And I'm glad that you mentioned the CSBA Conference. I was very happy to attend the California School Board Association Conference. And one of the things that we gained is more unity, because all of us went, Gabe didn't, but we were able to have Judy, who will be joining our board, come. And it really gave a sense of unity and camaraderie among us. And one thing we want, one goal we have set for ourselves as a board, is to continue to grow and to self-reflect on how we can be a better board. And one way to do that is to learn about new things out there and to disseminate that knowledge. And at that conference, I think we definitely accomplished that. So thank you for mentioning it. Thank you for your report.
So I'll disseminate some of that knowledge right now. There was an amazing keynote speaker the first day, an author named Brandon P. Fleming, wrote a book called "Miseducated", tells his story about coming from the streets of Atlanta and winding up running the debate club for inner-city students at Harvard University. It's an incredible story. He was an incredibly motivating speaker. So if you have a chance, look him up, YouTube or something, and catch a glimpse. I don't want to, I haven't read the book yet, so I won't say read the book, but if it's anything like his speaking, I would recommend it then.
Thank you, Noah. Thank you, Dr. Bregy. We've had many events, and it's been very well-attended by everybody, really. And I'm very, very happy about the fact that cabinet and the board were able to be together at CSBA. I think it's probably been a first in a long time that everybody was together. It may have been the first that everybody's been together. And I think it just speaks volumes for where we are at this point, and having Board-elect, our Board-elect, Board member, Board-elect member, I'm saying that incorrectly, Judy Manicherry. We welcome her, and we're very excited to bring her on board. And we are going to be very sad to say goodbye to Gabe at our next meeting next week. So I encourage you all to please attend. We'll also be inducting Mr. Margot as president, most likely, and Dr. Stern as vice president, if all goes well.
If all goes well.
By all accounts, that's what's happening. So I encourage you all to come. It's a nice time, and the Madrigals will be here performing as well. And it's a tradition. And I'm really looking forward to it. I think we have much to celebrate and a lot to look forward to.
Do I still have a vote on whether or not to put Noah as president? Or am I going to be off the board at that time?
You'll be off.
You can whisper your preferential vote. No, it should be very exciting. I'm going to go back around to board, our student board member report.
The Zoom is not letting me share my screen. Colby, if you're listening, would you mind giving me access? But I'll still talk about. Two big things last week. The first was the BHHS UCLA Winter Blood Drive. And I just wanted to say thank you to everyone who donated. And a special thank you to ASB for organizing the entire event and for managing it throughout the day. And if you didn't get a chance to donate this time, we do have another one in the spring, I believe in March. So definitely stop by and save some lives. And then the second big thing was on Friday was our annual trip for seniors to Albion Street Elementary School. And this has been a tradition for, I believe, 80-plus years. Someone, we met, I believe, one of the parents from the elementary school remembers when he had done it, when the Beverly kids had come when he was a student there. And that was already like 50-something years ago. So and then someone else was like, I remember it 30 years before, so, long time. And this was really a day for the Albion Street children. And I personally was paired with the pre-K students, so they were very little, still in diapers. And it was just so much fun hanging out with them. And they were so excited to unwrap the presents. I am sorry to any of the children who got the presents that I wrapped, because I realize that I am not very skilled at that. But they were so excited that I hope they didn't notice. And also, just a huge thank you to Cheer for their performances, Dance Company. There were Christmas carols from choir, and the students got a demonstration from the robotics team on one of their robots, which is really cool. And thank you so much also to Service Learning and Ms. Neelis for organizing the entire event. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Mrs. Marcus, any comments?
Nope. No, I just want to thank you again for your report. I'm happy to hear about the blood drive. I think that's a wonderful thing that you can do. And also, the other event, you wanted to say something else, I think.
No, I just want to check.
Okay. Well, thank you for your report. I'm sorry the machine wasn't working, because I like to see the picture. Oh. Thank you. Thank you so much for your report, Alex.
Alex, no comments, other than I'm just going to really miss your reports. Thank you.
No further comments. Thanks for sharing with us, Alex.
Thank you, Alex.
The same. Thank you, Alex. And it was really great seeing you on Sunday as well. So thank you for coming out.
Also, a thank you for me. Just the amount of events that you are able to attend is really impressive, and you keep up with everything here at the high school. So thank you for making the extra efforts.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is board member meeting reports. And we may have already covered it, but I'll just go around one more time in case you missed anything, Mrs. Marcus.
Well, I did attend the Health and Safety Commission meeting a week and a half ago. It was the usual meeting. The police department gave their report on what's been happening in the community, a report on the incidents that have taken place, the number of them, and so on. The fire department also gave a report and talked a little bit about helping other communities in the immediate neighborhood with sharing, our fire department, when it's needed. The, one of the things that they do at over the meeting is Erica Felzenthal does, Dr. Felzenthal does a mindfulness routine with the community and with the members of the commission and the other members that are there. And she talks about how to relieve stress and activities that will make you feel more grounded. And she has an activity every time that they meet. So she shared one of her mindfulness activities. They also had a report from Debbie Dunn, the water, about conservation of water. She talked about what's been going on the last 12 months. The best interest, the most interesting thing is that there has been a 25% reduction of water use in the community during the last year. And of course, the most important thing is to try to prevent yourself from having any unusual leaks, drips, and what have you. And they do a lot of social media to keep you appraised of what's going on. They also have the shredding and compost thing coming up, which they've been doing a lot of. So basically, they were, that's most of the Health and Safety Commission meeting. I just wanted to share that I, too, went to the CSBA conference, and I did have some notes on each one of my sessions, which I'm sure I will not want to take any more time with. So I will thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for allowing me to go. I enjoyed being with everybody and being in, the five of us being able to connect and get ready for the next year.
I don't have anything to report.
I don't have anything to report.
There's one other thing for LACSA, which is the LA County School Trustees Association. On this coming Monday, December the 12th, there'll be a meeting. It's a hybrid meeting, but it's at 5:30 at La Tiara Elementary School. And the focus will be prioritizing mental health supports for students and staff. And there'll be two guest speakers, one from Laco and another woman, Jennifer Manier, who will be speaking. Her company is My Digital Tattoo. So it's available via Zoom as well. And they also keep the recordings. But it's, this meeting is fairly close, so if you, if the board members are able to attend, I know Noah will attend, it would be wonderful if you could all attend. And if you have any questions, let me know. We also met, LACSA met at the CSBA meeting, and we met with other board trustees from LACSA the very first morning at 7:00, and had a coffee there to meet some of the other trustees. And one of the other things that's really wonderful about the conferences such as CSBA is we also met other trustees. We met, we had dinner one night with trustees from Castaic Union School District, as well as from New Hall School District. And then last night, Noah and I and Mrs. Marcus attended, along with Judy Manicherry, attended a CTA board meeting that was hosted by CTA. And while we were there, we saw some of the other board members that we met at CSBA. So it's nice that we're expanding outside of the school bubble and sharing ideas and resources with other school districts. Okay, our next item on the agenda is Personnel Services. And I will invite up Mr. Horvath.
Thank you, President Wells, board members. What you have before you is the Sunshine Item for Reopener Negotiations between CSEA Chapter 328 and the Beverly Hills Unified Government Code, Section 3547, requires that all initial proposals be presented at a public school meeting in a public hearing.
Can I make a motion to approve the Sunshine Items for Contracted Negotiations between BHUSD and CSEH, Chapter Number 328?
Second the motion.
The motion was made by Mr. Margot and seconded by Mrs. Marcus. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0 with a preferential vote from Alex Bodden. Next item, Business and Finance. I would like to invite up Mr. Guzman, who will present the First Interim Report, 2022-2023.
Okay. So, good evening.
Good evening.
To our board members, President Wells, Dr. Bregy, our cabinet members and our community, thank you so much for the opportunity to present today regarding the First Interim Report. So I'll go ahead and share my screen here. And hopefully I get this right. Looks good so far. One second while I move something here out of the way. All right, there we go. That's what I'd like to see. All right. So in regards to the First Interim Report, as you know, we've talked about this before, where the budget cycle is, it just keeps going. We never stop. It's always projections and updates and everything else that we do. At this point in time, we're at the First Interim Report, and we'll be talking about what that is. But just wanted you to see kind of a perspective of where we are and where we're going to continue to be. So later on, in January, we'll have the Governor's Budget Proposal, followed by a Second Interim Report, and then the LCAP and Budget Preparations will begin, as well as the, then we'll have some more assumptions that the Governors may revision, and we'll adopt a budget. And then we keep on going in this cycle. So what is the First Interim Report? So the First Interim Report contains information regarding the district's budget and the updated multi-year projections. What it does is it looks at those projections and those data as of October 31st. So everything we know as of October 31st, we go back in. So we adopted a budget. We look at what's happened between June and October 31st, and we say, okay, let's make some adjustments. That's what the First Interim Report is about. It's just adjustments that you make based on known facts at that time. So it's due to the Los Angeles County Office of Education by December 15th. And in this, you also include like any carryover or any deferred revenues that you might have from the prior year, or any assumption changes that may have occurred. And so the First Interim Report also includes the General Fund, as well as all other funds. So at each interim report, you have to have a certification. Every district must certify, either as positive, qualified, or negative. A positive certification means that you can meet your financial obligations for the current and two subsequent fiscal years. Qualified means that you may not be able to meet those obligations, and negative means that the district, based on projections, will be unable to meet its financial obligations. You never want to be negative. That's a really bad thing. You don't want to be qualified, and you always want to be positive. And so we do recommend a positive certification. So we're happy to say we are still on track for positive certification, which is something we've been doing for some time now. And to really understand the budget, we need to know that the district is funded as a community-funded district, which is very different from other districts in the state of California. The majority of districts in the state of California that are funded off of LCFF funds. So essentially, the difference is that the majority of the district's funds come from property taxes, whereas with other schools, it's a combination of property taxes and state aid. Some of them have a lot more with of state aid, some of them have less, but it's just a combination. So that's why when you have that, your budget is structured a different way because of the way that property taxes come in versus the way state aid comes in. State aid comes in monthly, property taxes does not. And so our budget has to have sufficient reserves to kind of get us through everything. So here you can see some differences between state aid and community-funded districts. So like, you know, you could see those differences there. But so major changes in LCFF funding, you know, don't really impact the community-funded districts as much as it would for a state aid. ADA percentages and things don't impact it as much. But these are still really important things, like changes in property taxes really, really impact a community-funded district. So we have to keep a close eye on that. But that also makes our budgeting assumptions something that is a little bit of a challenge, because we don't know the exact number for property taxes. Whereas with a state aid district, where it's funded through LCFF, you know what that number is based on what your ADA is at the time. It's a better calculation. It's easier to calculate than, or estimate than with property taxes. Talking about property tax revenue, you could see that we went from, you know, $47.7 million in property taxes back in 1718. It's grown to about $65 million. That's the estimate we know as of today. At second interim, I might stand here and give you a different number. So I just want you to know that that's an estimate of what we're at. So $65 million is what we are estimating. Total enrollment, as you can see, that's continuing this declining enrollment. Now, this isn't a BHUSD kind of specific thing. This is hap- This is happening all across the state of California. But you could see that it wasn't really that much of a drop-off from 2122 to 2223. Currently, the enrollment number that I have, based on the last 1.17 report that I received, is at 3103. I do think it's a little bit higher. Again, that number, I might come up here at second interim and give you a different one, but that is the estimate that I know of as of that last report that I had access to. Now, in regards to general fund salaries, mind you, this is only salaries. You could see that 50.7 million is, funds our salaries. Now, if you look at the property taxes, pretty much all of that is going towards salaries. Now, what does that equate to per student? Now, based on the current assumptions that we have now, and what I know as of today, you are looking at about $30,407 per student in 2324. 2223 is 30,902. So you could see that this year is, is higher than last year, is what we're estimating today. That number again can change at second interim, but that's what we're estimating today. Now, in 2324, you're seeing a little bit of a drop, and that's going to happen with time because the ESAR dollars, which were the COVID, or also known as COVID funds, those are going away between this year. Most of it is going away this year. Very few dollars are allocated for next year. So that's why you're seeing that per pupil expense drop. So once those extra funds go away, the per pupil expenses will, will also drop with that. So let's look at the General Fund. So how, when we look at the revenue in the General Fund, about, if you took a dollar for every, if you, if you break that dollar out, you could see that 68 cents of our General Fund revenues are from local Beverly Hills property taxes, which is a big portion of our funding. 16 cents are from other local revenue sources like the JPA, the Ed Foundation, PTA, and other gifts and donations. 11 cents are from other state of California funds, like the Education Protection Act, the Basic Aid Supplements, the Lottery, CTE mandated cost grants, other types of programs, and just 5 cents are from federal funds, based on the current projections. So you can see that the majority of it is really local Beverly Hills property taxes and other local revenue sources that we have. In regards to expenses, we could see 76 cents employee salaries. How are we using our General Fund revenue? Well, 76 cents of it is for employee salaries and benefits. And that's usually typical at most school districts. It's really around 80% of your budget is used for salary and benefits. 5 cents for books and supplies, 18 cents for services, and 1 cent for deferred maintenance. Now, keep in mind, these figures are kind of inflated or adjusted a little bit because of the expenses related to COVID funds. In a typical school year, it will look a little bit different. It would look more towards salaries and benefits because your budget would be more for that. So that's why that looks that way. Now, if you, if you could look at this here, this is a comparison between the adopted budget, which is what we brought to the board in the month of June, and what we're looking at, at First Interim. So one of the big changes was in the beginning fund balance. They actually ended the year better, and so you're seeing a bigger beginning fund balance there. Property tax revenues look slightly higher, about 1.2 million. State aid is like slightly, slightly lower, 400, just by $400. All other state revenue has increased about 3.8 million, and that's really those, those grants that were, that we presented at the 45-day revision, is that it's being recognized here at First Interim. Federal revenues increased slightly. That's mainly because of carryover and your local revenue, just a slight increase based on just things that are happening locally. So from one year to the next, I'm sorry, from the adopted budget to First Interim, you're seeing an increase in revenues of around 5.6 million. When we look at, sorry about that, and when we look at expenses, in regards to salaries, that's actually lower from the projection at the adopted budget, at about 50.7 million. Employee benefits have actually gone up very slightly by about 5,000. Supplies as well. Services have gone up by about 1.2, and transfers to other funds, you could see some of those, those changes there. Total expenses, when you, when you calculate it all, it's about 2.8 million of an increase for the ending fund balance to grow from 19.8 to 22.6 million. So that's where we're seeing the, the ending fund balance actually grew. When we look at the multi-year projection, though, at First Interim, and then the two out years. So we're always looking at the budget. We look at the current year and the two subsequent fiscal years. Our reserve level at the end of this year is estimated to be at 31%. Next year, it's estimated to be at 29.17%, and in 2425, at 28.75%. You can see that that reserve level is dropping. Again, that is mainly because of the fact that you don't have the ESAR dollars in, in the budget anymore, and you're seeing some deficit spending really when it's said and done. In 2223, we're seeing deficit spending of about 450,000. In 2324, deficit spending of about 3.5, and in 2425, deficit spending of about 965,000. The good news with this is that, you know, you still have a very healthy reserve level. But the thing is, we want to start looking at our budgets. It's not something to, for us to be necessarily alarmed about, but it is something that we have to take a close eye on, look at our budgets, verify where we are, look at all different cost points and see what we could do to curb deficit spending. You know, districts that make these adjustments early on are districts that are successful. Districts that don't make adjustments early on are districts that get in trouble. So we have to start looking at the budget, we have to start looking at next year, and seeing how can we avoid deficit spending, and what can, what adjustments can we make internally? What other revenue sources can we look at? Those, we have to look at every single thing. Now, again, we do have a reserve. We're showing 29% is the projection as of now, and, but it's still something that we want to address. We don't want this to be a trend where you're deficit spending every year. Now, mind you, these are the assumptions that we know of as of today. What I'm showing you on the screen here is not something that, you know, in 2425, you're going to call me and say, oh, you were wrong by, by this much. No, this is a projection based on what we know today. A lot of things can change from now until 2425. So this is what we know of as of today. It's our best guesstimate of what will happen. But you could see that our expenses are going up i- in the, from the second to the third year, and, and so we have to make those adjustments as we move along. But at the end of the day, your general fund bal, ending fund balance at the end of the third year is 16 million. You also have Fund 17, 11 million for a total unrestricted ending fund balance of $27 million, which equates to a 28% reserve. Now, in other funds, we have our Student Body Fund, which ended at about 300, it's projected to end at about 300,000 in, in regards to the ending fund balance. We have our Cafeteria Fund, which we're really excited about. There's no general fund contribution here. So we're actually seeing $937,000 is where we're going to end Fund 13. This is what we used to have, these large contribution amounts, like, you know, but now, and we're again projecting no, no general fund contribution for food services. In regards to Fund 14, you could see there that the, the General Fund, we're spending about 2.4 million there in expenses. The General Fund contribution is about 1.2 for an ending fund balance of about 75,000. So last, the reason why we're spending more than what we're contributing is because we had a carryover last year, so we're actually spending that down. That's why you're seeing that larger difference there. Fund 17 is growing just slightly from 10.93 to 10.99 in regards to revenues, and, and the reason why it increased is because of your interest earnings. So that's, that's why you're seeing that increase there. Fund 21, you're seeing, you know, those adjustments of, where we're going to end at about 157 million, according to what we know as of today. That number again can be adjusted as time goes on. Fund 25, we could see that, that we're projecting about 1.8 million would be the ending fund balance in 2223. Our revenues of 400,000 and expenses of 200,000. Fund 35, that's about $18,000, you know, I might, that's one of the funds that I'm going to look at moving around so that we don't have it anymore. It's just sitting there. So it's something that hasn't been touched in some time, so I'll probably look to move that out. Fund 67, our Self Insurance Fund, we're looking at that ending at about 700,000 at the end of 2223. Fund 71, our OPEB Fund, we're looking at that at about 6.3 million is where we see that ending at the end of the year. The OPEB Fund is really contributions from the district. It's really our revenue source that, that, from the General Fund, is contributing towards the OPEB. So that's why you're seeing that increase there and no expenses. So those are all the other funds. In general, you know, 2223 is still operationally affected by COVID funding. So we're still seeing COVID funds, and we have to address that, you know, as ESAR funds expire, we will have to reorganize without the ESAR funding. So that's something that we have to just keep in perspective, right? We're still having declining enrollment, ESAR funds are going away, so we'll have to look at making some adjustments. And although reserves have increased, the audit has, has not been completed. This is something else that I just want to make sure I, I let the board know. The audit is, is still not complete. We expect to have it somewhere around February, that the audit will be completed. Sometimes what happens in an audit is there's audit adjustments. And so if those audit adjustments happen, we'll make sure to reflect that at second interim. So I don't, I'm not aware of any adjustments at this point, but if it does happen, I will make sure to, to bring that to the board at second interim, and we can make those adjustments. Well, another thing here that I, I want to highlight is the JPA revenues, as you saw before, those are a large and important portion of our budget. I mean, it's, it's really important that we keep those revenues, and hopefully if there's any way to, that, that could increase, because costs have increased from the last agreement, and that is something that we'll have to look at. But it is a very, very important source of our budget. You, you saw that graphic before where, you know, if that were to go away, a big portion of our budget goes away. So next steps, hopefully you approve the First Interim Report. And another thing we're doing internally, we're implementing a position, a different variation of a position control system that carefully monitors movements, and this will be crucial in the next years as COVID funds expire. We'll also be conducting a careful reconciliation of our balance sheet accounts. That's something that, like accounts payable, accounts receivables, cash, things that are due to other funds, those types of things, we, I, I want to do a careful reconciliation of those things, and we'll look at any adjustments at second interim. It's just a good practice for us to clean our books that way. And again, our audit's not complete, so hopefully we will have an update for you at second interim. If there is any audit adjustments, we'll, we'll let you know. And of course, we're going to continue to monitor fluctuations in property tax revenues. Now, for second interim, again, you'll have your property tax updates, audit updates, COVID funding update, you'll, we'll have a COVID funding update then. We'll look at some initial staffing projections for 2324. We'll look at any changes in state or federal or other funding. We'll also look at where the JPA agreement information is, and if we do have any legal settlement updates, if they're available, we'll incorporate that into the second interim preview. So at this point, I don't know if there's any questions. So I'll turn it back to you.
Alex?
Just thank you, Mr. Guzman, for always having reports that are on very complicated finances, but you make them so easy to comprehend and understand, so thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
Mrs. Marcus?
Thank you again, Rafael. I would like to go back to, I was looking at this this afternoon. Go back to Slide 17, please. 17, please.
Yes.
I think there's a problem there. And I think you missed, I'm going back to it. On Slide 17, you have employee benefits at 21705, and then, oh, I'm sorry, it's the next one, supplies.
Oh, you know what? Yeah, sorry about that. I'll, I'll, I'll correct that.
That seems to be an incorrect figure there, and I think, I'm wondering if that's affecting the bottom figure, or whether that bottom figure is still good regardless of the fact that...
No, that's, that's the correct number there. Sorry about that. I'll, I'll make that correction. Thank you.
Because I think I figured that out. It was probably about a $1.2 million difference there.
Yeah. No, it's, it's, it's a different number. Sorry, sorry about that. It must have not carried over in the formula. Thank you for that.
Okay. The, the, the audit that we're going to get, we must remember, is for the year 2122, but you're going to be making adjustments on the 20, the 2223 budget, correct? That's what I'm...
Yes. So the audit is the 2122 audit. So any adjustments that we have to make would have, would, essentially, it would affect your 2223 budget. So if, if they say, you know, that there's, you should have ended higher, then we have to, you start higher, right? If they say we should have ended lower, we have to start lower. So we'd have to make that adjustment there.
And also, I'm, I'm very curious about the per pupil expenditure going back to last year and this year. The $4,000 per student is extreme, and that's, you're contributing that all to ESAR funds, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And...
And, 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 and Ms. Marcus, just with second interim, you'll, you'll probably see a different number. This is based on what we have at first interim, what we know, we're projecting now, so at second interim, that number will look a little bit different.
Okay, and then just a little bit of a statement that I'd like to make, and that is, is that the continual drop in the percent of money that is left in the General Fund at the end of each year is a little bit of a problem, because we have, I believe, set a figure of about, I'm trying to recall the amount, was above 30%, if I remember correctly, what we said we should have, and we're starting to drop. So that we need to really scrutinize the budget for where we can make some savings, I think, because that's, it's starting to drop, and that's, that's of concern to me.
That, that's correct. So that's, that's what we were saying earlier. When you're looking at the deficit spending, you want to make those adjustments early on enough so that you're able to, you know, correct course and, and not, not get into, continuing to deplete that reserve.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For the report.
Thank you.
Rafael, thanks for the report. A couple of questions. With respect to property tax revenue, so we went from, in 2021, 2022, we went, we had 60 million of tax revenue. 2222, 2023, we're estimating roughly an 8% increase to 65 million, which I think makes sense. I think properties, you know, property values continue to go up. I think with everything that we're seeing in the real estate market, I would say that it seems to be flattening out, or maybe going down a little bit. Who knows? I think it's still too early to tell. But is that, is that the biggest driver for, on page 19, the, the, the total revenues going down from 95 to 90? Are we expecting a drop in the property tax values, or is that...
So the, a lot of that is in regards to your, your federal funds coming down, your expiration of your COVID funding. So a lot of, that's really the driver. In regards to property taxes, we're projecting a 4.5% increase next year, and then a 4% increase the year after that. But what happened this year was that we recognized some of the prior year taxes that came in higher than what was estimated, so we recognized some of that in the current year. And essentially, when we did the, the projection for the 2324 school year, we included that at 4.5% of what it would have been without the prior year revenues. So some of it is what you're saying. It's a lower, in the sense of like, not as a, as high of...
You're not, you're not, you're not increasing at the same rate, right? We got an 8%. We're, we're estimating roughly 8% bump, but, but so for next year, you're still estimating for it to go up, but for it to go up by 4% and not 8%.
Yes, exactly. Yeah, and, and so that's, that's what we did. But you're seeing the loss of some of the revenues there due to, you know, no more in regards to ESAR funding, those go away. Some revenue sources that we recognized were actually carryover from the prior year, and those will go away. And there were also some, there was also some one-time funding sources that we received, like those grants, so those are going away as well.
Just, just anecdotally, I'm not hearing of big jumps in, in property values. If anything, they're staying flat, so we may just want to be mindful of, you know, you know, us budgeting to see a 4% increase. To Ms. Marcus's point about wanting to have more in reserves, we may want to be more conservative there, just my...
Yeah, definitely. And so at second interim, we'll have a better idea. Four and a half, you know, it's, it's half of what, from the, from the 8%. And historically, it was, it's been hovering around four, and so that's why we kept it there. And so that's, you know, but, but to your point, we'll, we'll, we'll take a look at the property tax as, as we start seeing more figures coming in, in the current year, even current year taxes, like, we're estimating that amount. So if that number comes in a little lower, that's going to affect the projections out there as well. So that's why, this is one of those things where, you know, what we're looking at right now, the opposite could happen as well. We could get higher, and now your deficit spending is lower.
Higher is great.
So that's, I mean, that'd be perfect, right? So, but that's why we have these interim reports. They're meant to be like checkpoints where we look at our budget, and we see, are we on course? Do we need to make adjustments? And that's, that's what we're looking at.
That's great. And I just want to point out again, I, I mean, I think the fact that we're, we have so much support locally for, for the school as well, and that's such a huge part of, you know, the revenue we're bringing in that, that has been keeping that, you know, the amount that we're spending on per student over $30,000. I think that's, I think that's pretty incredible. So kudos to our, all the local support that we get there. That's pretty amazing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guzman. Actually, Gabe actually spoke about what I was gonna address. So thank you, Gabe, um about the property taxes. So I'm all set. Thanks.
I I I like, I saw your notes, so I just.
Um, thank you, Rafael. Um, yeah, there will be conversations to be had um sooner than later to to address, and you and I have talked about that in the past as the S R funds uh run out. What are we looking at as far as our district and programming and and us overall staffing and being able to maintain what we can under the circumstances that we'll be facing. So thank you for the, putting a picture to it.
Sure. Thank you.
Um, I have a question for you about the adopted budget. And then when we, then we had the forty-five day revise. So when you're comparing, you're, are you comparing to the revise? Are you comparing to the actual original adopted budget?
I'm comparing to the, to the actual original adopted. It's just, it's just a better kind of viewpoint. Yes.
Yeah, okay. Um, and then um, I just also want to thank you for your diligence. I I feel like we're in such good hands. You've already made so many improvements and I love how you present this and you're presenting it in a really digestible way. And I also appreciate um that you'll be doing the reconciliation. I I really appreciate that.
Sure.
Um, and I look forward to seeing the interim, the interim budget. Oh, I had one last question. Um, are you projecting out that we we will continue in the next three years to receive the funding for the food service?
Yes, yes. And and that's a pretty reasonable uh projection. You know, every.
It's such a difference in our budget. It's hard to believe. Yeah.
And and every governor has has had their kind of project. You know, Governor Davis, it was, I'm sorry, not Governor Davis. That was way back. It's uh before Newsom, uh Governor Brown, thank you. His thing was LCFF and something like that. Uh Governor Newsom, his thing is this universal feeding. So it's not, I I very seriously doubt that that will go away.
That'll go away.
That's his thing. He he's promoting that, just like, you know, the expanded learning. Those are his two, those are his things. And so uh he he wants that to continue. I I don't see it uh, you know, evaporating and um and so I I think that's why we're safe to project it. There's no, nothing that's been said that it's not to be considered uh, you know, ongoing. So so we're.
I think we're really fortunate to have that in our district, um since it's always, you know, it it has always been a transfer of funds that go into that typically before. Um and it's nice that we have a committee that's working on um improving the quality of the food that the kids get and and really maximizing that potential. And I really appreciate all the work that's going there as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And and uh just wanted to also just say real quick, sorry, I forgot to even say this at the beginning, but I just want to thank also our our my cabinet mates here. Um uh they, I, you know, I met with each one of them, you know, uh Laura and and Matt and uh Dustin, and we went over like, you know, kind of the their staffing and everything. And so they were really helpful in this whole process to put this interim together. It was a whole team effort. So I'm thankful for them. And of course, my business staff as well for all of their work.
Thank you for saying that. I know that you are short on your staff and I really appreciate that you were able to do this along with everything else. So thank you to you and to everybody else that that supported you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the first interim report.
Second.
The motion was made by Mr. Margot and seconded by Mr. Halimi. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero with a preferential vote from Alex Bodden. Okay, the next item is the annual developer fee report.
And uh good evening again. So um, so every year, we are required um by government code, section sixty-six, zero, zero, six and sixty-six, zero, 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 one, to uh present the annual developer fee report. So you you see it there. It's uh the PDF that that we presented. Essentially, what we need to do is just show what came in and 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 what went out. So I'll go ahead and show that really quickly um while I pull that up. So this is just, you know, our annual developer fees report. Now, this is for the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. Um and as you can see, we received around nine hundred and seventy-one thousand in uh amount of fees that were collected. Uh the amount of interest earned on those fees were thirteen thousand dollars. Our beginning balance was three point five million and our ending balance was two million uh as you could see there. And uh the expenses were uh, you could see at Beverly Vista Middle School, there was uh one point six million that was spent in capital construction and uh three thousand that was spent in leases and repairs. Over at the high school, about fifteen thousand was spent in in other supplies related to developer fees and capital construction was about fifty-eight thousand. Over at Horace Mann, capital construction of about five hundred and seven thousand dollars were expended there. And uh district-wide, uh about eight thousand in in consultants, uh and then a hundred and eighty-seven thousand in capital construction for a grand total of about two point four million dollars. Um now, in regards to administration fees, there was twenty-three thousand that were spent in administration fees. Uh essentially, the 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 city collects our our developer fees uh for us, so that's why we have an admin cost there. Uh this is actually really beneficial to us because or else then we'd we'd have to like kind of prepare for people coming in and and paying for it here at the district office. And so that's pretty much the report. It's just a quick snapshot of what was, what came in, what went out and uh where it was spent.
What was the percentage for the consultant fees?
Um, well, I I think, so we have like point three six percent that we had in consultants district-wide. Uh and 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 that's just though the developer fee. So that's not.
I understand. Just that one pot right there.
Yes.
Does anyone have any questions? Mrs. Marcus?
I just have one question. Do we have any idea at this point uh how we are standing in the developer fees and a rough estimate, or is that something we wait for at the end of the year to know how much we we have or spent so far? Is there any estimate at this point?
Yes. So with, let me see, uh let me pull that up. So with the developer fees, um eh, so we're looking at, um let me uh eh eh essentially revenues of about four hundred thousand is what we're projecting. Uh we're we're only projecting about two hundred thousand as of now in expenses. And the ending fund balance would therefore be one point eight million is what we're projecting for this year. Now, there are some projects that we're looking at that might be funded out of developer fees. If that is, then you'll see more in that expense. But I'll have another update for you at second interim. Developer fees is real, is is difficult to kind of, you know, uh project because eh especially in this climate, right? Eh eh people might not be taking as many loans out and might not be developing as much. Uh so depending on where we are. So at at second interim, we'll have a better picture of that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? All right, I'll call for the vote.
Well, you need a motion first.
We need a motion, actually.
I'll make a motion to approve the annual developer fee report.
I'll second it.
Motion was made by Mr. Halimi and seconded by Mrs. Marcus. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero with a preferential vote from Alex Bodden. Okay, our next item is the approval of an exclusive listing agreement with CBRE Incorporated.
And good evening again. So um, that's the third one. So that's, um so the, so this agreement um is the approval of an exclusive listing agreement with CBRE for the solicitation of proposals for the potential lease of the district's real property located at two-five-five South Lasky Drive, Beverly Hills, California, nine zero-two-one-two. Uh it's recommended that the district staff respectfully recommends that the Board of Education approves the attached listing agreement and authorize staff in consultation with legal counsel to make any changes necessary to meet the purpose of the listing agreement and execute the final listing agreement. The financial impact is the CBRE team, Lustig Bower, shall be paid a commission for all services set forth herein to be based upon two hundred basis point or two percent of the total lease consideration for the first twenty-five years. So that'll be the fee, two percent of the total lease consideration for the first twenty-five years of the lease agreement that would potentially be entered into. So that is the uh structure and that's what we're recommending for approval.
Any questions? Um, I'd just like to say thank you to Peter Ostroff and Jonathan Swordlow for working uh with the district. Um, they started off on the seven-eleven committee when we were looking at surplus property and have remained involved in consulting with our district. And I really appreciate all the time that they volunteered uh on our behalf. And I want to thank you, Rafael, for all of your hard work and jumping into this so quickly.
Thank you. And I'm also appreciative of of Peter and and Jonathan. They've been a a invaluable source to get us where we are now. So thank you to both of them.
Make one comment, Mary?
Yes.
Um, I was uh at the State School Boards Association. I attended a uh session that dealt with this particular topic called the Real Estate and Legal Best Practices with School Closures. And it was right on what we were doing and how they presented it and just remind the community that this requires the demac, demographic studies and our goals, our needs and our processes and the bel- bel- validating our valid, validity, our factors that uh we have to consider. So I really enjoyed the session and I thought that we were right on with what they were talking about with school closures. So.
Yes, def- definitely. And and I uh and I attribute that a lot to, and thankful to the board and Jonathan and Peter for guiding us, make sure, making sure that we're all on the right path, as well as our our counsel with uh Stephen McLaughlin, his guidance. Um eh, we went through a whole extensive RFP process. We didn't just select CBRE out of, out of the air. We had several really well-qualified candidates and we landed on CBRE. They had the best proposal for us and uh and so we're really excited and ho- hopefully it gets approved.
This, this has been several years in the making and I know where it's, this is the next step in an evolution that will hopefully lead to um a a deal and development and and something to better our district for the long haul. So thank you for continuing to be part of this merry-go-round of district surplus property.
Sure.
The other thing that I'd say is I really appreciate, Rafael, that you did go out for an RFP, for the RFP. And I I really just appreciate having you on board and bringing that compliance to our district. I think it's just so important and uh I really, it just, you immediately showed that strength and I really appreciate it. It's it's, you know, it's, these things can, people can get excited and want to push things forward. And I just really appreciate that you are keeping us on that path because I think that's the best path for for our district and for all districts. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Thank you, Misses. Thank you.
Um, uh, may I have a motion?
Hold on, Mandy has a.
No, I was gonna make a motion.
Oh, wait, hold on. So so just before we make the motion, I just wanted to echo what Mary said. Thank you. Thank you to your team. Thank you for negotiating this. Thank you for the RFP. Um, I think it's really important to have that process in place. And so, and uh I think we got, you you know, a good deal. And I and I also just hope that this is the, you know, the start of us, you know, realizing the full potential of what we have as a school district and being able to leverage some of those assets for the betterment of our students. And so I hope this is the start of other, you know, potential uh, you know, projects like this that we can look at. So.
I agree. I think the other thing I'd like to say, and because this is the start of something, I think, really long-term, um, is that we always talk about our district has such a wealth of assets in terms of all the people in our community that are so invested in our schools and in our city. And this is a perfect example of us having the ability to uh take advantage of our community members who are involved in the city and uh offering their resources to us as a district. And this is, this is what makes our district really unique. We have, we have a lot of really fantastic resources uh from the people that live here. So I encourage all of our community to continue to be involved and uh offer your e- expertise to our district and to our city. So thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, with that, I will call for the vote. Or the motion. Sorry, I thought you, I thought you made it.
No, uh, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, I'll make a motion to approve the exclusive listing agreement with CBRE.
I'll second.
The motion was made by Dr. Stern and seconded by Mr. Halimi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero with a preferential vote from Alex Bodden. Thank you very much, Mr. Guzman.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is our Board of Policies. Uh, we're going to have approval for the first reading of Board Policy six thousand series, and I'll let Mr. um Seaman introduce.
Yeah, uh ultimately, over the past, I would say, year and a half, um we have been working through a variety of different study sessions to be able to review all of our six thousand um Board of Education policies, which pertain predominantly to our educational programs for the district. And so at this point, we are at our first reading after completing those study sessions. And so I kind of open it back up to the Board of Education if there's any questions around the edits or the updates that were made through the study session. Um and so I'll hand it back to you guys.
President Wells, I'd like to make a motion to actually waive the first reading of the six thousand and approve the second reading.
Sure. I will second the motion.
Okay, uh, motion was made by Mr. Margot and seconded by Mrs. Marcus. Does anyone have comments? I know I do.
Uh uh that is, that, are you gonna read that whole binder? Is that what we're doing?
No, that's what I'm hoping we don't have to.
We already read it.
No, I wanted to, I wanted to just thank you and your team for the labor of love of going through and reviewing uh all those policies. And then also to my colleagues for the time that, you know, you guys all spent, that I also spent actually reading through all the policies. We've done so much of this over the course of the last year. Uh but I think we had some really good uh but discussions uh that as a board, I appreciate how we challenged each other through this process, challenged Dustin, Dustin challenged us. Uh I think it was a meaningful process. So, thanks.
Thank you. Mrs. Marcus?
I would also like to echo and ditto those very words. And I would like to say that many of these particular bylaws and policies were quite ancient and have not been updated for many, many years. And it it's gonna be nice to go through the book and see that the whole six thousand series has been updated. Uh and and it, so it's updated according to what we do now and what is in place. So that's what's important.
Dr. Stern?
Um, yes, thank you so much, Dustin, for your patience as we parsed through many of these policies that have to do with instruction. Uh one thing that uh I was particularly interested in was evaluation and how students are put into special ed or how they solicit uh evaluations. And I know that one thing that a lot of districts have to manage is the efficiency with which uh kids are assessed and also the the overlap between kids in general education and handoff, let's say, to special ed and the overlap. And I I was really happy that we had a chance to revisit the policies, given that they were, you know, pretty dated. And of course, the COVID pandemic uh made things very different and added a lot of shifts and needs. And we're really lucky that we had the wherewithal to revisit the policies. And I'm not sure that lots of districts have done that since the COVID pandemic. And they really should because it's a very prudent thing to do. Thank you.
Mr. Margot?
Thank you. Um, one of the best parts about the experience and the multiple study sessions about this was the amount of time we spent talking about education, breaking down subject matters within the policies and discussing them um as a board. You know, there's, there's three things a board is tasked to do. Budget, check, we did that tonight. Um, Board Policies, doing that right now, check. And um Hiring and Firing Superintendent, don't worry, you're good. And that's, that's really the purview of a board, especially after coming from the CSBA conference to see um the roles that boards really play throughout California. And and when a board is really focused on doing its job and and pu- pu- performing its duties in regards to policy and bud- and budget, things run smoother in a district. So this is a great opportunity that we took on um this over the course of the last year plus and really broke it down and talked about these items as as a, as a board and a cabinet and and really stressed education, as is in our mission and vision. Um, it kind of brings it all back home. So, thank you.
Um, I just want to say thank you as well. I think um it's actually been in the last year that we've done all of the nine thousands. And now we've completed all of the six thousands as a board. And um I I asked Michael the other day, how many uh Board Policies is that in total? But I know that uh yours is probably is well over a hundred and thirty, I think. And if I recall correctly, because I was breaking it down into sections when I was trying to study them, two hundred. And then uh I, we must have had, I don't know, thirty or ninety, somewhere in there for the nine thousands. And we've gone through every single policy and I don't think that they've been updated, most of them, since two thousand and nine. And so we went through each, we've been going through each and every one of these policies as a board. Uh first, um Dr. Brege and his team has had to review them and then put together what the recommendations are. And then we, as a board, had to go through each and one, eh each and every one of these. And it's been a very arduous task, but to what Noah's saying is true. This is our main job is to make policy and it feels really good to have these two, these two done. That next will be the five thousands. I encourage you all to look on our website. They're there and um they'll be continued to be updated. And of course, we're gonna stay on it and keep them current as we go. Um but it feels really, really good to have had the conversations that we've had um to get this, get these two um in the can, so to speak. And now it's about making sure that we follow our policies and um to um to adhere to them and use them. And that's the that's the structure that does make us successful. So thank you very much. Um, we've had a motion and a second. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero with a preferential vote from Alex Bodden. Thank you very much. Thanks for your patience.
Mary, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution. I make a motion to approve a resolution twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three dash zero eight, continuing authority to hold virtual meetings pursuant to A B three-six-one.
May I have a second? Motion was made by Mrs. Margot and seconded by Miss, I mean, Mrs. Marcus. You guys are married now. Uh and uh seconded by Mr. Margot. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero with a preferential vote from Alex Bodden. Next, we have the public hearing uh agenda, public comment. And I'm going to get a list from Ms. Crossar.
Can I make a very quick comment?
Sure.
I want to apologize. I wanna apologize in advance to the members of our community that I'm not gonna be able to hear speak tonight. I thought this was gonna be a shorter meeting and I'm committed to be at an event in forty-five minutes. So, when I leave, if I miss hearing anyone speak, I strenuously apologize to everybody.
Okay, um, so, we're gonna start public comment. We have many, many public comment, uh, many people that are gonna speak. I'd like to ask you all to keep your comments to, uh, two minutes or under. And, um, and to please be mindful of your time. Um, we'll have a timer set, but when it goes off, uh, rather than having us stop you, if you could please just, um, manage your time, we really appreciate it. And, uh, the first person that we'll hear from is Ryan Fainted.
Uh, first off, I'm going to, uh, steal the time of my mother. That's how good of a son I am, so, please add two minutes to my clock. I'm gonna steal another two minutes from my good friend Andrew Cathy. Shows you how good of a friend I am. Uh, so, that would be another two minutes and I'm gonna steal time from the legend himself, uh, Coach Mark Black from Santa Monica. Uh, he just wanted me to say that he double-legged a kid and he still got to coach and all I did was push one. Uh, uh, actually, he double-legged many kids, but only one on video. To those people that ceded my time. Uh, I wanna start off by telling you about, uh, the Beverly Hills Wrestling Team this past week. They competed at the King of the Hills and did wonderful and also competed at the, uh, Rim of the World Tournament in Lake Arrowhead, by the way. Uh, Coach Pete Beresford, uh, Beresford drove all the way from, uh, Rim of the World to be with us tonight. Thank you. Um, and they did wonderful. And, uh, in fact, I had, uh, one, one of my sophomores, Daniel Salkin, who is a sophomore. I wish he was here right now, but he's currently practicing with the band. Uh, he had to meet that engagement right after his robotics meeting. I know he's also, I think, uh, on the debate team and, and all sorts of other fun things. He is probably not what you would think to be a quintessential wrestler, or athlete for that matter. Uh, I'm sorry to embarrass any of my wrestlers, but I'm probably gonna make you stand up. Oh my God, there he is, right on cue, Daniel Salkin. That is fortuitous. Daniel Salkin went three and one, he went two and one at King of the Hill, three and one at Beresford and you took third. The only match he lost to was a guy who was, arms were the size of a tree trunk and was covered in tattoos. Daniel might not be what you think of a wrestler, um, but to me, he's the best and he is a wrestler. I pride myself in going out and finding people that might go against type. In fact, I'm sorry again, uh, Jaden, just 'cause you're close. Jaden dressed up today. Stand up, Jaden. Jaden is also a, uh, a talented Despian. I believe he's, uh, Lead Tree in the play, is that now? That's an inside joke. It's an inside joke, but that's a promotion. Jaden went two and one at King of the Hills, um, uh, and, uh, has just become a remarkable wrestler as a sophomore. Uh, prior to wrestling, I think his, uh, best traits were he could touch his heel all the way to the back of his head.
Not to the shoulders.
And, and, uh, had appetite for very, very few things. But now, he's one of our better sophomore wrestlers. I'm putting you on the spot, but I can't begin to tell you how proud I am of you. Uh, Lucas, our captain, one of our two captains, he, uh, went to Rim of the World, didn't have his best day. Sorry. I'm embarrassing you all over the place now. Uh, he had his best day the, the night before a win because there wasn't really clarity among the coaching staff on who should go to the tournament. He actually went through and called kids individually for two or three hours on Friday night and somehow, as a leader, convinced them all to go, in which they did. Guys like Clyde, who are first-year wrestlers and went and won varsity matches. He might not have had the best day as a wrestler, but as a leader, he was tremendous. I, uh, would like to talk a little bit about, uh, the incident. Uh, as you all know, I have apologized. Uh, at the same time, I feel that, uh, it was clear that I was trying my best to do what I believed in my heart was right to protect my kids. Um, if you look at the school district's website and you go to the anti-bullying page, it says, "School employees shall establish student safety as a high priority and shall not tolerate bullying of any student." Furthermore, it says, "School staff who witnessed bullying shall immediately intervene to stop the incident." Further down, "School staff shall receive related professional development, including information about early warning signs of harassing, intimidating behaviors, and effective prevention and intervention strategies." That's what it says, "School staff shall receive." I didn't receive it. So, here's what I did receive. I received a warning in my head and my heart and I felt that my wrestlers, the thing that mattered most to me in this world, were threatened by a person who had committed and admitted to doing violence to one of my wrestlers the day before. If you watch the video, does it look pretty? No. But it shows me pushing a kid away from a crowd of my wrestlers that have gathered behind me. Then it shows me, hopefully, going in the direction of the swim gym. It was cut, you know? I'm sure you have the video. I, I, I hope that the board has seen it. It troubles me to think that you haven't seen me going and getting security and an administrator. One thing my wrestlers will tell you is that I have never, ever not had their backs. Beverly Hills on their website has made it a missions, a mission statement to curb bullying. It's one thing to make a mission statement, it's another thing to find people who are gonna go on a mission to do it. I have given eleven years of my life to fight for our kids, to make our kids better and safer, day in, day out. Twenty-six hundred dollars a year, which is what we would call a loss leader. I do it because I love our kids. At no time did anybody on this staff ever think to ask me or believe me when I said, "As an eleven-year employee," and by the way, also as a wrestling coach, who should know a thing or two about physicality, "Ryan, did you feel it was a threat?" And the answer would have been, "Yes." Our kids are important to me. They are why I'm here. I am incredibly proud of our kids, incredibly proud of our community, incredibly proud of our parents who have come and sat through two of these board meetings. I'd like to think that they're here in support of me and I guess they are, but they're also, more importantly, in support of our kids. As I've said before and as I will say again, I believe in this school, I believe in this district, I believe in this community and I believe in every single person up here on this dais. I have met some of the finest administrators and I have said it over and over, how honored I have been to share my time at Beverly with them. I have loved this community. I have loved these kids. Right now, you have an opportunity, whether that's today after this meeting, whether it's today after I'm done speaking, whether it's tomorrow, whether it's this week or this month, you have an opportunity to show the kids that you care, that you listen, and that you have their backs. I'm not asking you to condone putting hands on a kid. I'm asking you to understand and condone the fact that I believed a threat was there. I'm asking you to understand that our kids are the most important thing here. As elected representatives, as members of this administration, I hope that you will show and prove to every single kid on our team, every single kid at this school, that you have listened, that you have heard them, and that you will right a wrong. And part of that wrong admittedly was mine. But to terminate me, to end my tenure over something where no one was hurt and no one was threatened, except for my kids, is something I cannot understand. Please, be there for our kids. Please do the right thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next person we're going to hear from is Vlad Strickman. And I believe that Chris Drake has ceded his time, so you have four minutes.
Alright. Integrity, integrity, integrity. Entering up there as well. The value of integrity has been indoctrinated into me since I was first entered the district back in 2008, all the way to 2020 when I graduated. Administrator, administrators and teachers would always lectures on the values of integrity and big posters would hang outside Beverly Vista with the words "Integrity" in all caps. Now, for me, it's mind-shattering and enraging that those same administrators and even their superiors would throw out the principles they have been teaching. I've been reading articles that Dr. Breggy had, Breggy has been making comments. And instead of showing integrity and providing the full and complete story about the incident with Ryan, Breggy made the following statements. "Appropriate steps were immediately taken to investigate the event. No stone was left unchurned. Witnesses were interviewed and the video footage from before, during, and after the video was scrutinized." But that is not true as we know. Next, Breggy went into further by saying, "No bullying or record of bullying was ever filed with the high school or district admin." Let me remind everyone that I am there on the leaked security footage. Uh, first off, Ryan notified security personnel and two high school principals that were there that evening on the second about the bullying incident. They found out the same day. Obviously, the video footage does not show Ryan getting security or the conversation between Ryan and the principals and the assailant, because that would discredit Dr. Breggy's story. Next, I and my fellow coaches notified the head of HR of the bullying when we made him listen to our recount of events. Knowing to everyone, we were never properly called in as witnesses, as Dr. Breggy has stated. Ryan was already pulled on leave when we came in to make our statements on our own. Also, the middle school wrestlers that are also here or their parents were never questioned either. They are in the video as well. Ironically, Dr. Breggy opened the door for us when we came in to give our statements. Another time the district was made aware of the bullying was during their last board meeting, which most of you guys were here for. Speaking of the last board meeting, the administrators tried to silence us, threatening to cancel wrestling season if parents and students spoke in the support of Ryan. Going based on just the facts that I stated, board members told me a few weeks ago that there is no conspiracy. In the matter, this sounds like a conspiracy to me. Now, I'm asking, how can Dr. Breggy make statements like that when the investigation was never actually done and so many facts were ignored or just not used for convenience? I'm convinced Dr. Breggy was actually churning stones instead of conducting the investigation. And if that's the case, then I rest my case and Dr. Breggy's integrity is still intact. Now, I'm gonna remind the board that this is not the Communist Party of China or the Soviet Union, but rather a democratically elected board by the citizens of Beverly Hills. Since we are your constituents, you have to listen to our requests. We made our request pretty clear at the last board meeting, to reinstate Faintage. But if you do not wanna listen to us, we do live in California and the United States and our constitution makes it pretty clear about the process of removing elected officials from their posts. I urged this board to do its job. I also asked the district to stop smearing me and my other coaches as we were there and we saw what we saw and you guys are refusing to share the full story.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Keith Jordan Cranus. Jordan? Hi, Jordan. You have two minutes.
Uh, thank you, board, for allowing me to speak. My name is Jordan Cranus. My son, Kobe Cranus, wrestled under Coach Ryan for all four years that he was at Beverly Hills High School. I, like so many here today, have spoken on, on Coach Ryan's behalf before. Excuse me. I won't get into the details again, but the crux of what I spoke about last time was the relationship that Coach Ryan developed with my son that went far behind that of a coach and an athlete. Coach Ryan was one hundred percent, excuse me, supportive of Kobe, both in the best of times on the wrestling mat and in difficult times. Excuse me. Excuse me, sorry. Uh, adding difficult times, uh, off of it. Coach instilled a work ethic, a leadership mentality, and a maturity in my son that will last him a lifetime. He's the young man that he is today in large part, thanks to Coach. Having had the privilege of spending a good amount of time with Coach and, and the team over those four years, I can tell you that his mentorship of my son is the rule, not the exception. He shows that same support and guidance to every one of his wrestlers. My message to you is simple. Please don't rob current and future members of the BHHS community of that kind of positive influence in their lives. This is a difficult world that these kids face. Someone like Coach Ryan doesn't come along for them, uh, doesn't come along for them every day. I think it speaks volumes that so many of us have shown up again to appeal for Coach Ryan to be reinstated. I don't think I'm alone in saying that. I'll show up to support him as many times as you'll allow me to. Respectfully, Jordan Cranus.
Thank you. Uh, next is Kishav Bhatra. Kishav Bhatra.
Alright, um, I wanted to thank the board members for allowing me to speak today. I'm, uh, honored to be able to speak on behalf of my coach, who, that me and my family have, are very grateful for having in our lives and for helping me, you know, during my life in high school. He's the main reason I was able to push through, uh, my high school years when I was struggling to make friends and he took me under his wing and made, and made me part of our family at the Beverly Hills Wrestling Team. His competitive and humble nature are, and great love for his team are what we need in not just a wrestling coach, but teachers in general. He's a good example for students because he stands up for those, like myself, who struggles, who has his own struggles and who can't speak up for themselves. His sense of humor is, his sense of humor is, I mean, he hasn't, he has this rare ability to make both students laugh and learn at the same time. These are something, these are the great strengths that can never be replaced. Firing him would leave a huge void in the BHHS wrestling community that me and fellow alumni have been a part of since freshman year of high school. It wouldn't be the same for us and new students. And I honestly hope that something could be worked out where he could be, you know, given another chance to, uh, coach the new generation and, you know, forward and still have alumni visitors on the mat. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Dr. Raj Bhata.
Good evening. I, uh, acknowledge and commend this board, uh, which is authorized to make difficult decisions on behalf of a divided citizenry. Uh, tonight, I've seen firsthand, uh, the diligent oversight that Mrs. Marcus brings and sort of pointing out a line item, uh, in a sheet of, uh, PowerPoint slides. And that's important. It's important to scrutinize data and making decisions on behalf of the public. I'm sure the rest of you also act with due diligence. also act with due deliberation and intent. This is the second time in the last 12 years that I'm approaching this board as a parent to speak on behalf of an impactful educator who is in the process of being wrongfully dismissed. I use the term educator and teacher deliberately. Coaches teach our children not only how to be more proficient at physical skills or sporting activities. They also serve as role models for men, women, and citizens of character. I speak on behalf of Coach Faintich because I know him to be a man of character. I came to know him very well over the years he coached my son, a gentleman you just heard from. A young man with special needs. Ryan looked out for him. And to be honest with you, I believe he was probably the most impactful and influential educator through Keisha's high school tenure. I request the board to reconsider this decision, restore him to a station where he can similarly influence our children not only to be followers of rules, but to be great citizens. Hopefully, your decision will enable them the opportunity to tell the difference between these two virtues of civility. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Keith Carrara.
Beverly Hills Board members and superintendent, thank you for hearing me. I've known Coach Ryan since 2016. Beverly Hills team has come up to Lake Arrowhead every year. What a great bunch of kids you have. They wrestle very tough. They're always competitive. And I'm really impressed with, win or lose, how they conduct themselves after a match. And that is not... It's basically because of the coach. The coach teaches kids how to act after matches. They teach them the benefit, the leadership that is needed for coaching, for wrestling. Many of you, and I bet, just like my board at my high school, have probably never seen a wrestling match or what these kids have to put in the training involved. There's a study where it's 280 hours of conditioning and work ethic for a six-minute match. That's pretty impressive. Like I said, I've known Coach Ryan for years. He's always had great teams. I just find it really hard to believe that one individual can ruin the athletic, I guess, the careers of these high school athletes. And I really wish you would reconsider your decision in the last board meeting. Thank you very much.
Michael Nguyen.
Thank you. Thank you for your time today. I'm here representing my son, who has been beside himself since learning of the incident. He's a junior now in CU Boulder. He came to this school with accommodations. He was depressed. He was in his room, video games, not really interacting with people. And one day, he walked into the wrestling room, and Ryan just scooped him up and took him under his wing. And he has become the most well-rounded, confident young man. My wife and I are... I mean, I'm emotional because everything that my son is today, in the last six, seven years, the transition, I attribute to that man. Like I said, my son's three years removed. I have no business being at this meeting. I really haven't even thought about BHHS. But knowing what I know of that man, I had to come up here. You know, I've always taught my son that that if your actions don't support your words, then you have nothing to say. And so, I needed to get up here and I needed to speak my piece. And I appreciate the position that you all are in. But this community here, and the greater community, and the community that's going to miss out on someone of such character, it's a shame. And you have an opportunity here to do what I believe is the right thing and reinstate him. And I really thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Cheryl Faintich. She ceded your time, that's what I thought. Thank you. Next is Andrew Cathay.
I ceded my time as well.
Okay. Jan Reyes.
How y'all doing? So, I came up here, and I just came here tonight to speak on the type of person Ryan is, the type of coach he is. I see like the values, mission, the vision that's showed upon, behind you guys. I imagine this is very important to all of you, something that you guys want every employee and every coach and teacher to fulfill in every day. And I can say, Ryan, let's start with the mission, educational excellence, or like just to make sure our students realize their full potential to thrive. As many people here said, and I can feel that many people can agree with me, Ryan was one of the most impactful people in my life in high school, and I could say in the last, like, yeah, last six, seven years. The person I am today, how I walk, how I walk, not how I like move myself into the world, is because of how Ryan taught me to behave, to be a good person in this world. And Ryan, and anyone here, when we doubt ourselves when it comes to school, wrestling life, Ryan reminds us that if we want to do it, we can. He's someone that puts confidence in you every day you see him. Even when jokes that like might, as a joke, might bring you down, like you know it's out of love. And so, and it's, he like, I don't know, just every time I see him, I know, I feel better by myself. And I know I can, like, my day's just going to go better when I see him, or when I know I'm going to see him. He's just that type of person. And I get emotional talking about it just because of the impact he's had on my life, and just thinking that he's not going to be here anymore. Or like, as you can see, Leo and Rattim, Rattim right there laying his head, they're kids that, they're in middle school right now, but they've been, they've had the luxury of like being able to know Ryan, and they've gone to love Ryan as well. They love wrestling. And the people they're becoming now just with wrestling, let me tell you, they're both machines. And Ryan is, and like them and many other kids, Ryan was making them into kids that were going to be a super team. And we're going to be great people in this community, in this school, that we're going to strive with excellence in education and sports. So that's why I say.
Thank you so much. Jason O'Hara.
Hello. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. So I'm just going to read off my phone real quick so I can try to get in all the two minutes. My name is Jason O'Hara. I'm the head wrestling coach at Torrance High School and United States Marine Corps veteran. I bring up my military experience because I learned early on that Marines' actions are a representation of their leadership. I would not call myself Coach Ryan Faintich's friend. We do not hang out. We're not drinking buddies. And I'm pretty sure there's no Christmas presents under a tree with my name on it. I tell you this because I want you to understand that I'm not here talking to you all because I have my friends back. I'm here talking to you all because it is the right thing to do. I'd like to share with you my experience at the Beverly Hills High School King of the Hills Wrestling Tournament that took place on November 30th. I witnessed a group of young men, a group that called themselves the Beverly High School Wrestling Team. A group of young men that have had their leader, their coach, taken from them abruptly before their first competition in their own house, in front of their friends, family, and spectators. With all the insurgency and conflict afflicting their team, lack of practice, lack of conditioning, and most unfortunately, lack of leadership, these young men did not shy away from the task at hand. They stood tall, confident, and showed respect to each other and their opposition. Both in victory and in defeat, hands were shook with heads held high. What I saw in these young men are the same values that were instilled upon me by the United States Marine Corps: honor, courage, and commitment. Ryan, I want to thank you for teaching these boys to become young men, for being the leaders who instill strong values, for being a person others strive to emulate, a person who does what is right even when times are hard. To the board, all I need to know about Coach Faintich, I can learn from his wrestlers. So I ask you to do the same. Learn to do what is right even when times are hard. Return Coach Faintich to his rightful position as head wrestling coach at Beverly Hills High School so that he can instill the values that turn boys into men. Thank you.
Elijah Clapper.
Hello. And thank you all for allowing me to speak, for being here. I know how tough of a position this is for you all, and how much you don't want to be doing this. But it is necessary that we all make the right decision moving forward. I was a freshman when Ryan became head wrestling coach, and I was a different person. I mean, I'm not, I'll just leave it at that. I was a different person, was very bad at football. I played football, I just had, I don't know why. Didn't play any sports before wrestling, and I just decided to wrestle. It was his first year, so he spent most of the time, and going off the top of my head here, so forgive me if I stutter or whatever, he spent most of his time just cleaning out, you know, cleaning out what was there from before, getting rid of the kids who were, you know, doing drugs or bringing everybody else down. And he was willing to do that at the cost of our matches, of our of our meets. He was willing to kick kids off the team who were bringing everybody down and take the short-term risk because he was in it for the long run. And I can see that now. It's 11 years later. I come back, I graduated in 2016, so I'm that far removed. And when I come back, it's like an institution. It's beyond any one person at this point. The values, the ethics, the way the wrestlers carry themselves is amazing. And I've seen that growth. And I was the only wrestler at my senior year at CIF, which is like the immediate playoffs after the regular season. And it was hard to move forward in a postseason when your team is not good. And you're the only person, not that the team was bad, but, you know. And you're the only person, but going forward, it's like every year it just gets much better, much better, making these ginormous leaps. Even if you replace Ryan with somebody who has half the heart as him, you will not find anybody with like a quarter of the strength and capability that he has to offer. So I implore you to make the right decision. And for yourselves, make the right decision. For us, make the right decision. I just don't see why you would not reconsider and bring him back on as a coach. I don't see why not.
Thank you. Bahare Fez. I may be saying this wrong. Bahare, thank you.
Adilsha Ulian and Mandy Donner have kindly forfeited their time to me. So thank you so much for this opportunity. I guess there has been plenty that has been said about how Ryan Faintich created and cared for the Beverly High Wrestling Community. How without Ryan, our children have lost a powerful force of good from their lives, and how that void is painful and damaging. Tonight, I would like to bring to your attention two issues that have not been emphasized enough to the point of doing them justice. First, I think we can all agree that one of the most critical tasks of a schools is not only to educate, but also to protect the well-being of the students. That's why the law of California, as well as other states, mandates for any teacher or school staff who notices any signs of physical or emotional abuse, even if it occurs at home, especially if it occurs at school, to report it to school administration or children's services. Teachers and school staff are all mandatory reporters by law, not reporting abuse amounts to disobeying the law. Sometimes, this is not only a matter of well-being of a student, it could be a matter of life and death. Children die every day in United States as a state of, as a result of physical abuse or an aggressive encounter that leads to death. Moreover, Beverly High's anti-bullying policies expect the school staff and administration to take bullying seriously and to stop, to put an immediate stop to any bullying. And having said that, here's a question that I would like to put before all of you. How is it possible that a student who was bullied and abused come to school for at least one full day of school with obvious signs of physical abuse? As Coach Ryan showed us the picture, he was surrounded by tens, if not hundreds, of teachers and school staff, and not one person took one step to report this abuse to school and to do anything at all to protect this child from further bullying that day. Sadly, the school have failed to fulfill its critical mission and legal obligation toward this student by not taking immediate action and making sure that the perpetrator will not repeat the abuse. Had the school fulfilled this responsibility, the bully would not have approached his victim with an intention that can be easily expected from him, knowing his previous history. And then Ryan Faintich would not have found himself in a situation where he intended to protect the student, but was not trained to execute his intention in a manner expected by the school. I agree with you that there is a need for a change, a drastic change, but that change is not to remove Ryan Faintich. That change, that reform should occur in the school to reevaluate how and why an abused student was not given the care and protection he needed. The reform is to train and retrain the school staff to take physical signs of abuse as a possible matter of life and death and to take immediate action. Ryan Faintich did not hurt the perpetrator in his attempt to protect the abused student, but the perpetrator not only hurt another student, but he was given another chance to repeat his crime if Ryan Faintich would not have intervened. Please consider creating a reform in straightening the moral code and ethics of the school and the way it deals with bullying and abuse in the future, and not in taking away a force of good. The second point is the aftermath of Ryan's absence. Okay, I'll make it short, that the team is a state of chaos. Nothing is in order. My daughter, who is a Shabbat observer, is not getting any proper accommodations. At the end, I ask each of you to please reconsider your decision and give these children back their coach, their mentor, their friend, and to some, their father. Thank you.
Thank you. Roy Nyberg.
Good evening. I'm Roy Nyberg. First, as a high school physics teacher, I just want to say that this is the first school board meeting I've been to. I work at private schools, and I'm actually very touched with how you've recognized students and teachers, and brought in speakers, and listened to everyone at all these things. So, thank you for that. I coached at Beverly Hills for four years in wrestling, about six or seven years ago. And I just want to share a few stories. One of the first things that Ryan did was figure out who had been on the team before he got there, put their pictures on the wall, found some wrestlers from the 80s and 90s, brought them in to speak to the kids. He built a sense of community. And I think it was very important to see like... when you're building a community, you know, the athletes see how you treat members of the community. And he's always been very respectful. One of the big things in any sport, and particularly wrestling, is how you deal with adversity, how the athletes respond, how coaches respond, you know, the grace. The grace we show each other, but also the encouragement to put your effort into self-growth. And I've been very honored to work with Ryan. I haven't coached here in like six years, and when I found out about this, I felt that I had that perspective to share of working with him every day. I don't have any comment on the situation. I've only read news reports. I guess just from my perspective, the way I see things is what makes the community stronger is to extend some grace to someone who's very committed and beloved. And that is my perspective. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Laron Travis. Hi.
One of the disadvantages of going kind of towards the end is that everybody said everything that I wanted to say, and probably better though, so that's okay.
You're closer to the middle.
Oh, sure. So I'll try and summarize. Vlad, you expressed the rage that everybody here feels. We are pissed off. This is injustice. Right? Grievance is what we feel. And it's going to motivate us. These guys don't quit. Ever. You have a chance to right a wrong. Your community is telling you they feel it's wrong. You can be creative in the way you do that. You have a coach who's willing to come back, who is taking active steps to make any decision you make in his favor more palatable, more acceptable. The real question is, is whether what he did is so grievous that it makes him ineligible to be on campus. Is he a threat to our kids? If he is, I don't want him here. My daughter goes here. He's not. He jumped in the middle. Where's everybody else? I want people to jump in the middle. People who do sometimes don't do perfectly. People who don't do have an unblemished record of not doing. Ryan does. He does so much more good, and he has done nothing that would disqualify him to be a valued, respected, cherished member of this community and of this school system. I could go into a list of things that he has done in our favor. But I will end by telling you this. He is one of the crown jewels. And our determination to right this wrong will not go away. Make this right. Inaction condemns this team and these seniors to not having the season they should have, and they will not get another bite at that apple. Thank you.
Thank you. Steven Little. Steven Little? Okay. Hi. We're good.
Hi, so I'm Steven Little, aka Coach Little, aka also Negro. So I am from Royal High School, Simi Valley. I have known Ryan for I don't know how long. But I am here to tell you, I mean, I could tell you about how amazing he is, how great he is. Every single kid could tell you that. All right, so I'm just going to tell you from my coaching standpoint what I see from Ryan. Because seeing him two programs, Calabasas and here, and he is a difference maker. First time I wrestled, the first time he came with the Calabasas, it was an instant changer. I'm like, when did they get tough? Like, I couldn't believe it. Like, we actually had to struggle. We almost, we didn't lose, almost lose to him, but it was much different in the past. We literally blow him out, or like, you know, we just blow him out. And this time, they went in like four matches. I'm like, what is going on here? So I actually did some investigation, and I found out this is the man, right there, Ryan. He was the reason why those kids were so good. And I was like, wow. Then he transferred over here, and nothing personal to you rich boys, but that was not feared. Nobody feared a Beverly Hills wrestler until that man stepped into your business, into your room. That guy right there turned your program from what is laughing stock, I'm not trying to disrespect you guys at all, but nobody feared you. Two, a program, y'all beat us in the quarterfinals. And like, my team is not a bad team. We're a decent team. We're multiple-time CIF champions. We have runner-ups. We were supposed to be in the semifinals that year. They knocked us out. They right there, that team, he literally turned, he made everybody respect Beverly Hills High School around the state of California. This guy is amazing. He's nice. He does, he does a lot of things for my team. My team love him personally. They all, like, every summer he comes through, and they all laugh and have a good time. He makes posters for my kids. I can't even tell you the things he does. He just does so many things for me as a personal thing, personal, personally, to help my team be better as in like a presenting awards standpoint. And when he comes to help teach technique, he's just amazing. And I think you're making a huge mistake by letting him go, personally.
Thank you. Mark Platt.
My name's Mark Platt, class of 1978. Hi, this is Marcus, class of 74 Elrodale. Okay, so I just wanted to say, 1977, we were Bay League champions. And Dr. Solnit over there, who's sitting right next to me, he was one of the stars of that team, and he'll speak in a few minutes. 2017, they won the Bay League. I decided I was going to do the whole thing about the board and everything on that board, but everybody else did that. Let me just say, Coach Ryan reached out to all of us and brought us back from the dead, okay? Put Hall of Famers like Gary and Mark Schoenfield, and people that actually made a difference at this school and in this program, and instilled it in these kids. The heater, right, in the wrestling room, guys? You know what I'm talking about? That thing was there when we were there. We dreaded it too, and wearing those, you know, plastic sweats and everything. Look, I was a pretty garbage wrestler. I wasn't that great, okay? Gary, who was 20 pounds lighter than me, kicked my ass every day in practice. But the point is, it doesn't matter if you're the great wrestler. It doesn't matter if you're the great, you know, star of the team. It matters that guys like me and these kids will keep coming back and supporting this program. This is a great program. It was dead. The two best coaches this school ever had, Jack Gifford, our coach, and Coach Ryan. Coach Ryan brought Jack Gifford back, the late Coach Hoag. Everybody came back to watch this team compete. Every year, pre-COVID. I haven't been able to come this last year because of business stuff, but I would come back and support this team, and I want to see these kids wrestle in the future with their coach and their parents. The parents love him. Everybody loves this guy. Gary and I, all the ex-wrestlers that come and support, love this guy too. So we'll be back.
Vanessa Sisterna. Vanessa. Okay, I'm going to move on to Shayna Volk.
Thank you for listening. I know my son doesn't go here anymore. But seeing how that coach was dismissed or removed, I believe it was a rash decision. I do, I not only admire Coach Ryan, how he had the ability to bring these boys together as a group, but as a family. I was here at every match. I went and saw these guys practice. And they, together, are more formed with Coach. When I first heard about the shoving incidents, it shocked me, and it upset me. But then I looked at it, and I didn't see him punching out a kid or hurting a kid. I saw him get in the middle and trying to protect a kid. And I think that's important, too. We have put up these walls over the years because of perpetrators coming into the school and hurting our children. But bullies are just as strong as a weapon. Bullies hurt people. This child that bullied the other came in not right after school, no, three hours after school. Security wasn't around. No one was around. But Coach was, and Coach stepped in. You ask these students that if someone is hurting you, or if you're having a problem, speak to the security guard. Speak to an authority. Coach was that authority. Please reconsider.
Mark Black. Clyde Snyder.
Hello, my name is Clyde. I'm a member of the wrestling team, and I'm speaking here tonight on behalf of my support for Coach Ryan. I feel he has been severely wronged in this incident regarding his employment. The investigation asserted by the district, in the words reported to the Beverly Press, and I quote, "No stone was left unturned. Witnesses were interviewed, and the video footage before, during, and after the incident was scrutinized." I believe these words do not reflect the actuality of the investigative action. Two students present in the video in question were not interviewed. In an active investigation, all eyewitnesses are required to give a written report describing what they saw. This was not the case here. So I would like to, so I would like to stress the importance of reevaluating this decision. Thank you.
Jennifer Ortiz.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jen. I was part of the wrestling team. I was only wrestling for one year with my best friend Alexa. We joined kind of like as a joke. I'm not here to talk about the incident, but I just want to, you know, Coach is like, he's amazing. I, my brother also wrestled, so he's also a main reason why I joined this wrestling team. Yes, girls wrestle. One thing I do remember is I still have that shirt that says, "We don't stay on our backs." Here we are. This, the community showing up says enough. Again, we don't stay on our backs, so we'll show up again. Thank you.
Jaden.
Hi, my name is Jaden Bemaro, and first thing I want to say is that Coach Ryan cares for us. And six, six is the amount of days he spent with us, like, two hours a day for the practice, and not even including the kids' club for the middle school. He did weekend practices. I know not a lot of coaches did weekend practices, actually. So it was a surprise when I learned that, and Coach was the special one, I guess. He would get us to tournaments, even if the timing was bad for him. He does so much for this team, and no other coach that I think of would or can do that, all of that. And he does this not because he has to. He does this because he loves this team. And he does this because Ryan Vantage is the best coach we have. He will be the best coach for anyone that will have him. But finally, he has changed all of our lives in the best way possible, and I know the entire team can say that without hesitation. Thank you for listening, and please, please allow Coach Ryan to come back to us.
Daniel Sulkin.
I would like to start by thanking the school board for letting me talk again. I'd like you to know that we're all here because we know we have something in common. We have Ryan Vantage. He is always there for us. He will always be there for us, and he cares. He has shown support to these alumni throughout everything they've been through, be it wrestling or non-wrestling activities. He has shown support to all of us on the team, to our middle schoolers who are joining the team in the future. And we can count on him to be there for us. He was there for Daniel when Daniel needed it, when nobody else was there for him. And that's what makes Ryan different, because people can go up and say that they don't support bullying. People can go up and say that they care about all of the values on this board. But Ryan is the one who stands up for said values. Ryan is the one who instills them in the children, and Ryan is the one who makes our future a better future. So I'd like you to consider the fact that Ryan is the person that we all strive to be, and that he makes us better people, and that we need him, and he needs us. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel?
I don't have a lot to say, but I'll say this. I don't know anyone who could be a better hire than Coach Ryan Vantage. I haven't known coaches long as Vinnie did. I don't know coaches long as Lucas Cornier or Diner or Adel Shulian did. But I can say this: the coaches that we had, with all due respect, are great people, but they're not 11 years of pure wrestling experience, and they're definitely not all that character that Coach Ryan Vantage is. They're not the character that stood up for me, and they're definitely not the character that pushed me, pushed my limits, and saw me succeed. Also, I don't have much to say.
Thank you. Lucas Cornier.
I'm Lucas Cornier. I'm the current captain of this team. And I'll be honest, when I joined this team, I got to come clean. I joined to get out of PE. And honestly, I remember freshman year, I had PE first period, and PE coaches were like, "Next week, we're getting in that water." And hearing this as my round, long-haired freshman self, my heart sank. I mean, I'm sure if I jumped in the water, I probably would have floated like a buoy, like very buoyant. But I just, I couldn't do it. I had no body confidence. I had no real confidence in myself. And it was Coach Ryan that came to that PE classroom and was like, "Hey, all you PE orphans, wrestling is ready to adopt you." So I joined the wrestling team, and it wasn't the love of the sport that made me stay, but what really made me stay was the culture and the community in that room and that team of guys. And I just remember looking around that room and thinking like, "I'm chopped liver out here. Like, these seniors and these juniors are so good at wrestling." And I just, you know, I wanted to be there for the ride, and I figured, you know, if Coach Ryan did it for these guys, maybe it'll work for me. And I don't know if any of you were at King of the Hills, but my wrestling got a little bit better since, and I can just say that throughout my four years at this high school, the countless memories, trips to Missouri, everything that Coach Ryan has done for me has really made me the person that I am today. And honestly, I just, I can't think of a single staff member who has been more impactful to me throughout my four, well, three years so far, going into my fourth year. No one has taught me and pushed me the way that Coach Ryan has. And I'd just like to finish by saying- And I'd just like to finish by saying, "Please reinstate Coach Ryan. Thank you."
Thank you, Lucas. Daniel Diner.
Thank you, Board, for letting me speak here again tonight. Around the school, there are posters that show Beverly's core values, one of which is be kind and stand up for others. Why are we still letting bullies off the hook? This isn't a new issue in the district. In 2017, when I was in the sixth grade at El Rodeo, I was constantly getting bullied and beat up by other students. When I told administration, they did nothing. After continuing getting bo- getting text messages from the bullies and becoming completely tired of it, I texted them, "F off, I was tired of it." The next day, I was pulled into the office and I was told that I did something wrong for sending that text. I didn't know what to do. I felt helpless because not even the school helped me. They made me feel like I was in the wrong for standing up for bo- for myself and bullying, which I feel is completely backwards. My parents pulled me from El Rodeo and put me at Beverly Vista for the seventh and eighth grade. Fast forward three years, I'm in ninth grade. I joined the wrestling team, a sport I knew nothing about. I completely transformed into a more confident version of myself. Now I walk around feeling good about myself and I encourage others to help them make sure they feel good. All of these attributes I've learned from Coach Ryan. I would love to see Coach continue to instill these teachings to current and future Beverly Hills High School wrestlers. Thank you, and I hope you guys please consider reinstating Coach Ryan.
Thank you. Uh, we have two more public comments, um, via Zoom. Did I miss someone here? I'm so sorry. Gary Solnit? Is it Jay? Gary, I have Jay, sorry. Is he your big brother? Yeah, please come up.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to, to speak. And my name is Gary Solnit. I wrestled here from nineteen seventy-four to nineteen seventy-eight. And I've watched Ryan resurrect this wrestling program. In fact, it's been forty-four years since I've been here wrestling and I had the desire to come back and watch this team wrestle because he did such an incredible job with this team. So myself and many of my teammates have enjoyed coming back, watching matches, tournaments and witnessing how Ryan has developed not only a winning team, but that he also instills in his wrestlers good values and ethics and the understanding that success in life takes hard work, fortitude and sometimes standing up for yourself. I've watched the video of the incident many times. And while I understand that a teacher should never put his hands on a minor, in this video, the bully is clearly leaning in and taking an aggressive posture towards Ryan and the group of student wrestlers behind him. Witnesses have said that the bully stated that he was there after practice to finish the job. Who knows what that could mean these days? Who knows what an aggressive boy like this, who had attacked one of Ryan's freshman students, is capable of doing? Ryan said that he felt threatened. He was only doing what other adults should do to protect minors from bullies. Was he supposed to ignore those threats of finishing the job? Firing Ryan is just way too harsh. He isn't a school employee who punches a clock. He's a volunteer that actually cares about his students and was protecting them like I hope we would all protect our own children against a bully. He didn't instigate this situation. He simply stepped in to make sure that the bully didn't finish the job. I know this is a tough decision for you, Dr. Bregge and the Board, but do the right thing here. Send a strong message to the bullies in this world. Young men need more mentors like Ryan Faintich. Thank you.
Did Odell, uh, cede her ti- cede? Okay, thank you. That's what I thought. Um, so that, is there anybody else that's here in, in person that would like to speak? Ratib, go ahead.
Hey, my name is Ratib and I've known Coach Ryan for about a year. And in the time that I've known Coach Ryan, I've learned so much, not only in wrestling, but in other aspects of life. He has taught me not to be afraid of challenges and to work hard in wrestling, in school and to be a good, good human being in general. He has pushed me so hard in the tournaments I have been to with him. He puts so much effort into us, not because, not because he has to, but because he wants to see us improve. He drove me all the way to Vegas and spent the weekend with me and a couple of others just to see us improve. I am honestly so happy I made this commitment to wrestling and it would be a huge mistake not to reinstate Coach Ryan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did I see one other hand? Did you want to speak? Can you say your name when you come up?
Um, I just wanted to thank the Board for letting me up here and I wanted to say a couple of things um, about the bullying that I remember. Um, it wasn't just that Daniel got punched in the face. He also, we, we have a wrestling group chat where we talk with each other and he had exclaimed that the kid would also followed him home. I'm not sure if this was ever stated. I didn't hear it today and I don't remember it being verily, um, said la- in the previous Board meeting, um, before Thanksgiving. But he, he was followed home and a friend of his, um, he's not here today, but we could probably get him to attest. Sasha, um, who is new to this school, um, went out with Daniel and walked with him and like made sure like he didn't get like attacked again. Um, and I just wanted to say that regarding the bullying is another thing that I don't think was talked about. Um, I also want to say a couple of things about, um, Ryan Faintich. On the first day of wrestling that I joined, um, he talked about his brother who, um, had like done drugs and how it was terrible. He exclaimed to us that like drugs were terrible and he doesn't want anyone on the team doing drugs. And just, his character was very like, very strong. I know a lot of people already been saying this, but, um, in all, on all, all my classes, there's posters that say like drugs, vaping is bad, but they, they've never actually said anything like really about it. But the, the first day we had him, he did. Um, I also heard a story, um, last year, there was a stu- student on the wrestling team who, um, who smoked and he was forced to run up four hundred and twenty laps because of this. Um, that's the only punishment, I think, like a kid's gone for doing drugs. A lot of kids at these schools do drugs and they don't get punished for it, but Ryan made sure they did. Um, that just really goes to show his character. Um, thank you. Please reinstate him.
Thank you. Can you say, can you state your name? Can you state your name?
My name is Benjamin Silvers.
Thank you. Okay, I think I saw one last person, yes? Okay.
Thank you for letting me come up and speak, even though I didn't like write my name down. My name is Vinnie Vita and I don't really have anything like written down, ready to say. This is all coming from the heart. Um, I'm one of like the eighth grade students. I just started wrestling with Coach a little over a year ago now with me and my friends. And he's taught me a lot of things, like I feel way more confident about myself. I've trained harder, been, I've been more motivated to keep doing something that I want to stop doing. And whenever I'm like tired or I want to stop doing something, he like keeps reassuring that I do it. And I just want to say that I've had a lot of good experiences with him. I think it would be a big mistake to let him go, so please reinstate Coach Ryan. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you, but get, please give your name to Pam? And if anybody else wants to speak, you have to give your name to Pam back there. You did? Can you just give your name to Pam? Uh, I'm gonna go to the people on Zoom first and then we'll come back to you, okay? It's Benjamin on Zoom. Are you leaving?
Yes, yeah. Okay, awesome. So my name is Benjamin Mazes. You may have heard from my mother, Sarah Mazes, speak at the last meeting. I, however, am speaking to you from Brown University and as the Beverly Hills High School valedictorian of the class of twenty twenty-one. But more than that, I was the Beverly Hills High School Wrestling Team Captain. Please welcome Ryan Faintich back to do what he does best, leading and inspiring students. Ryan brought out the best in me. Aside from crafting me into a competent and effective wrestler, Ryan encouraged me academically and socially. In many ways, he helped make me a man. When I was being bullied my freshman year, he taught me to deal carefully with my emotions and helped me develop a strong sense of self-confidence despite how uncomfortable I felt. Eventually, Ryan helped me become a person who could teach the very same traits he taught me. At the same time, I had a close friend going through a serious depression and I convinced him to join the wrestling team. Him and I grew immensely as human beings and as wrestlers. These transformations were striking to me. How can myself and a person I knew be so personally transformed by a sport and a team? The constant was Ryan. He set the standard, always pushing himself to create the best wrestlers possible, but never letting that get in the way of helping form the best people possible. I cannot overstate how important Ryan is. That man does literally everything in his power for us. When tragedy befell, Ryan was the first person to regroup the team. When schools shut down, Ryan provided a platform for us to continue practicing and bonding virtually. Notably, a platform he spent hundreds of hours coding and programming. Ryan pushed us physically and mentally, but never without love and care. When I lost two grandparents to COVID, Ryan showed up at my door with food and chocolate. When my parents reinvigorated divorce struggles, Ryan was a person I could confide in. When I was beaten down and defeated, Ryan held his hand out and picked me up higher than I had ever been before. The impact Ryan has on the people around him is invaluable, is also a damn good wrestling coach. This suspension is disappointing. In fact, I cannot comprehend how Ryan could have done anything better. It appears that the district frowns on the creation of a safe environment, especially by a person who has so consistently and loyally done things to create that environment. I urge you to reconsider and immediately welcome Ryan back. Please let him continue to help those around him. There was no one else who does that as well as he does. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Armand on Zoom? Armand? Yes, sorry. Can you say your name? I apologize.
And you're not the first. Armon Farokh. We good?
Yes, thank you.
All right, well, someone ended early, so I timed for two minutes thirty and so in my mind, I'm thirty minutes, or thirty seconds early, rather. But anyhow, folks, Armon Farokh, um, great to meet y'all, not here physically, but class of twenty eleven. Um, believe it or not, first Masters qualifier in forty years to attend Beverly High. Uh, Mark Black was not my teammate, uh, but he looks great. Um, and, uh, I was coached by the one and only Coach Mead and, uh, was formerly assistant coach to Coach Ryan. And, uh, what I'll say is it's shocking to me that I'm, I'm even able to speak to a Board because, uh, wrestlers are, are an interesting breed of folks and they're, they're not the tall, good-looking, charismatic. Um, that's not the traditional archetype of athlete you see come into a wrestling room. It's a, you, you get a lot of the kids that look like me who, uh, they come in with the confidence issues. Yeah. They, and they come to wrestling because they think the sport is something that they can dig their teeth into to make them feel like a winner for once. And, uh, what I'll say is, is no matter what happens here, I, I'm endlessly gonna be grateful for what Coach Ryan did for the program that made me the man that I am and helped me turn my life around. And, uh, what I'll say is I was here in twenty eleven and he came in shortly after that and the first thing he did is he said, "This is what this team is gonna be." And anyone who came into the room who didn't have the right intentions or came to wrestling for the wrong reasons, he said, "That person's not gonna be a part of this team." And, and frankly, he was left with a room of, a much smaller room of kids who have really good hearts. And they might not have always been the most talented kids, but that room started to grow and grow and grow and grow. And, uh, what was really special is the reason it started to grow was, had very little to do with what he was doing on the mat. Yeah. There are little things, like we would go to the banquets and he'd be spending days like handcrafting these medals. And, uh, it was preposterous to me. I was like, dude, get a life, go to CVS and buy a medal for two dollars. And he's like, no, this matters. Yeah. And, and then we'd be at a tournament and I'd turn around and he's FaceTiming a kid at two AM. I'm like, dude, what are you doing? And he's crying and he's, I look at the screen and there's another kid in tears and he's there because his parents just broke up and Brian's right there crying next to the kid. And, uh, I can't speak to what happened at the swim gym or whatever it's called nowadays because it's been a minute since I've been there. But, yeah, this guy broke his back for this team. And I can speak to the four hundred other kids who might look a little bit like me who walked through those doors and walked out a better man or a better woman. And, uh, no matter what happens, I'm gonna be grateful for this guy. And all I'm gonna say is if your goal is to protect the kids, I think you've got the wrong, that you've got the right guy in the first place. That's all.
Thank you. Dylan? Dylan Lojack? I see his name up there. Peyton? Are you there, Peyton?
Second to fix my video.
Sure.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Um, so I actually wasn't prepared to speak. I thought I was coming just as a spectator, but, um, since you're giving me the floor, you know, I, I just want to say, so I'm class of twenty twelve. Um, one year after Armon, Armon was one of my main training partners and mentors. Um, so I actually never wrestled under Ryan, but, um, coming back, you know, year after year as an alumni, um, Coach Ryan kind of welcomed me with open arms, um, introduced me to the team, um, and really, you know, at, when I was on the team, it was, uh, we, we weren't the strongest team, um, as Coach Little and some other people have said, but Ryan has turned the program around. Um, he's, he's produced state qualifiers, something that was, when I was on the team, it was something that was unheard of to make state. Um, and every year, he's consistently produced great wrestlers, great students. Um, so he, he's been an, he's been an inspiration to me. Um, and I can tell from what, what he's done with the team, um, to, to remove him from the position would be doing hundreds of students, a, a, a huge disservice. Um, I think he, he's really made an impact on, on, uh, all of our lives and I think I, I, I would request that you reinstate him. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Peyton, I don't believe is there. So Pam, do you have any other names for me? He just gave a high five. William?
So I like to talk about something that hasn't really been talked about a lot. You know, a lot of talk about Ryan, Coach Ryan's character, but no one really talks about the sacrifice that he's made. You know, what other coach is gonna take us to Missouri for ten days and just, you know, let us have fun there? And it's, it's shown by the respect by other coaches. You know, what other coaches could have five other coaches show up, one driving down from Lake Arrowhead to come and support him? I think it shows how much everyone supports him because they respect him. I'm, I'm not, again, I'm not pointing fingers, but I think quite frankly, what y'all did was from like a litigation standpoint, y'all are afraid of getting sued. And I think that's understandable, but y'all also have to understand that he's, you know, he's an asset to this community. For many, he's the reason people stay in this district because quite frankly, why would someone like me stay? You know, I have other opportunities elsewhere, but I stood for Coach. You know, I have other opportunities elsewhere, but I stood for Coach. I stood for what he can do to me and I stood for what he did to everyone else. And you're really giving people, you know, lost opportunities by not letting him stay here. Because again, why would good athletes at this school stay? It's not like a stable coach like Ryan, coach people, you know? Who else is going to take someone to state? I don't think, you know, the new coach y'all hired, I, they're great, we love them, but they don't have the experience and they don't have the heart as Coach Ryan did. They're simply just waiting until Coach Ryan comes back, just continues doing what he's been doing. Because, you know, from my standpoint, again, I, Coach Ryan, I had a really disappointing football season. And, you know, that's what I'm trying to go to college for. Coach Ryan convinced me to stay. He really was nice to me and he embraced me, which, you know, the football coaches didn't do. You know, I respect them. They just failed to do that. Track coaches failed to do that. He was the only one who came to me and said, I really value you as an athlete and as a person. I'd love for you to stay. So I would just like to ask y'all to reconsider as, you know, he's the reason many people, not only like, you know, athletically gifted, but, you know, someone like Doc, Daniel Salkin, who's just crazy smart, stays in this school, stays in this program, continues to contribute to it, you know? When these athletes otherwise would just leave. Thank you.
Thank you. Stewart? Stewart, number one.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. This year, at the first practice, my son got a black eye. He came home and his mother was going crazy. She didn't want him to do the, the wrestling, which I think is very important. And I'm sorry, I, I I had a stroke two years ago. And before that, I was, I was whole. Yeah, I, I know that Coach Ryan is, cares for these guys. And all he did is get in between a bully that has not been properly handled yet. I saw this picture. I've, I know his name. I don't know who his dad is, but he must be some real powerful guy to let his son run roughshod over another kid at this school. I'm from the South Side of Chicago. And I love bullies because I just let gravity do its job. I didn't, I didn't hit him in the face. They came at me, I dropped him to the ground. Now, I was the littlest guy, but I'm just saying, I believe that the coach is the right guy for this job. And, uh, thank you.
Thank you. Would the second Stewart like to speak?
Hello, everyone. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Timur and I'm father of Ollie here. Yeah. So, uh, the difference is, like everybody knows the coach. I, I met him right, right here outside, like before this meeting and the captain right there. So it's nice to meet you guys, but I'm going to speak from perspective of the progress I'm seeing in my son. We moved to Beverly Hills like four months ago and for us, it was a tough decision because we didn't know how he's going to handle it. He's going to be alone and, you know, all these things, right? I should have one email to Coach. He got him in the team. Now he has 30 people, friends. He's very happy. He comes home with scratches. Yesterday, two days ago, he came with bust open eyebrow. He same has a black eye. But the next day he wakes up and he's like, Dad, I'm going to go to gym. I'm not going to wrestle, so I don't open it, but I'm going to do whatever the physicals. That shows me it's a discipline. It's the character building. And I'm not scared for him going into the adult life because he can stand up for himself, right? It's, it's because of the coach. Last time he sent the video of the wrestling tournament they went and 80% of audio was Coach Ryan screaming like, eh, do this, do that. I, I, I see he's a good coach. So one thing that bothers me is, so whatever happened, I don't know. Like he jumped in, he's getting fired for that. What if he didn't jump? He did whatever is right. You cannot touch the student. That kid went home, the bully stabbed him, killed him. Or maybe he stabbed him, didn't kill him, but made him crooked for life and he would be on a wheelchair. Would he be fired for not intervening? I think you need to make a right, right decision here. Thanks so much.
Okay, that ends our public comment. Um, I thank you all for being here tonight. Um, I know that we, we can't speak on this, but I would say one thing. I think all of you have been here in support of Coach Ryan and it's clear. And you've all had a chance to speak on his behalf and for yourselves. And, and, and you've been able to tell your story to each other. And I think it's really important and it's important to have compassion for each other. But, um, I would also remind you that we are a whole community and that there are other people involved as well and that we should have compassion for everybody in this situation. Thank you. Okay, next is Board comments. Alex? Mrs. Marcus?
In the brevity of time, I think I will pass. I just hope that we all enjoy the concerts that are coming up in the next two weeks.
Thank you. Dr. Stern?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Okay, um, again, I'd like to thank you all for being here this evening. And I would like to remind, um, anybody that's watching in the public as well as our broader community as well, that next week is our organizational meeting and I invite you all to come. Thank you. Dr. Breggy, any comments? Okay, with that, I will adjourn the meeting. It is 8:49. Thank you.